Which stands one nation on the ground, and visible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote at this time, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon?
Madam Clerk, Councilman Cahoon is logged into the executive session because he had difficulty logging into the Zoom, so he is present on the phone on the executive session, so he should be marked present here.
Thank you, Solicitor. Councilman Morato?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza? Council Vice President Rodrick?
Here.
And Council President Britto?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes motion of the City Council to meet, actually to meet an executive call session pursuant to after this meeting of the General Laws 42-65-582. And at that point in time, do we have any items that we would like to discuss at that point in time, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, so we have one item to discuss that's a settlement proposal, so I would ask that the council make a motion to go into executive session, discuss that proposal, then we'll come right back out and come back to open session.
You mean go into executive session now?
Correct. That's how it's posted on the agenda, yes.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to go into executive session at this point in time?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rodrick, oh, excuse me, Councilman Morato. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon? Councilman Morato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza is absent. And Council President Britto?
Aye. With that being said, we will go into executive session at this point in time and resume. Should we resume at 6:30 or immediately following executive session?
Immediately following, probably no more than, no later than 6:15.
Okay, so with that being said, we'll resume the meeting back around no later than 6:20 PM.
And Council President and members of the council, you should have gotten a call-in number. We're doing the executive session by audio only by phone. Get a separate phone number, okay? So if you just, if you, everyone mute themselves in case you're in the same room and/or set the recording off, Sam, and we should also go right to executive session.
We can stay, we can actually stay on here and just call in for the executive session.
But just make sure you're all muted, yes.
Okay, thank you. Make sure your phones are on mute, please.
All mute, everybody.
Thank you.
Residents of the city that intended to vote by mail ballot and they never received their ballot, their end of it. They mailed in, didn't get it back, and it appears that there were several people that this happened to. I talked with the Chair of the Canvassing Authority and he said he was aware of it also. And bottom line is, he indicated that the problem was at the Secretary of State's level. It seemed like maybe a new computer program or something either did not return ballots or got them back late. Too late for people to vote. Talking to the Mayor's Office yesterday, over the weekend, the mayor indicated people could come in on yesterday, Monday, at City Hall and vote via emergency ballot if they had not yet received their mail-in ballot. I know of at least four or five people that did that and they were satisfied that that was a better way to do it for them. I voted today in person at Martin Middle School and it went very smoothly. The spaces were distanced very well. There was plenty of parking. There was no wait. And I was there for about three minutes. So that basically went okay, but I wanted to get it out there and publicly that it appears there was this problem. It was not within the City of East Providence, although down the line, who knows, we might hear differently. But as of today, and I talked to someone at the State Board of Elections also, who confirmed that there was some kind of a problem at the Secretary of State's office. Not terrible. I mean, there were, I don't know how many, but I only received about five phone calls. So I don't consider that too widespread. But I did hear from our canvassing board chair, Mr. Marilla, that he felt it was fairly widespread and there was beyond anything they could do. So I think it worked out okay. People that wanted to yesterday, I assumed they wanted to avoid a potential crowd today, which really wasn't going to materialize being a primary. So they were able to vote yesterday in person, get it over with, stay home today. And people who showed up today had no problems. So in case any of my colleagues had not heard that problem, I wanted to get it out there. And for those who may be watching and were looking for an explanation, that's the best answer that I could find at this time. Other than that, I think we're fine. And going forward, the Board of Elections said they are working to see this does not happen in November, where it could be a bigger problem with more people voting. So thank you for that, that time, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our public comment at this point in time. I just noticed that Councilwoman Souza is joining us. So, and Councilwoman Souza, we just concluded with public comment and we're going to move on to the next item, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Oh, Madam Clerk, you're on mute.
I apologize. Okay, let's try that again. Council Communications is the next item. And the first item under Council Communications is temporary curbside pickup sign Greenwood Avenue across from the fire station in Rumford. Council President Britto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I put this on a docket to issue an emergency temporary curbside pickup throughout the city in an event. And this particular case is directly on Greenwood Avenue, directly across the street from the fire station, but within line of parking lot of Avenue End, the Pantry and Seven Stars Bakery. With the executive order that the governor has in place at this point in time and a limited amount of people that can go into restaurants, we have three businesses in one particular small area and very limited parking. There's absolutely no parking, which we'll get into later on in my ordinance that I have to remove a parking sign that's across the street in by the fire department. But needless to say, if I would like to, and I'm hoping that my fellow councilpeople will do the same if they notice a business in their area that has no parking or very limited parking, but yet there is a no parking sign on the street directly in front of their business that can affect their business, that we utilize that space for temporary parking or more importantly for curbside parking. In this particular case, I would like to utilize this space for temporary, for curbside parking. This way, in the event that somebody comes to the store, they don't have to, and all the parking lots are taken up from a restaurant, which is not very many, that the people could just run out to the sidewalk, curbside, and make their delivery as opposed to crossing the street or having somebody illegally park and running over into the area of the store. So this place again is for these three businesses, the Pantry, Seven Star Bakery, and Avenue End Parking, excuse me, and Avenue End, where we have a temporary sign for curbside pickup that as opposed to people running in and out and taking up a spot for those who want to stop into a restaurant or for a cup of coffee, we have these temporary spots for them and for curbside pickup. And I'm hoping that we can further this throughout the entire city in an event that there are other businesses that need this because of the COVID-19. Again, this is temporary. Temporary, I say for the next three months. We go by three months. And if this whole COVID-19 continues to go on, we just extend it. But right now, I'd like to do it for three months. And in event, as I said earlier, that we need to extend it, I'm hoping that we can extend it. Hopefully, be all resolved by then, which doesn't look like it will be, this COVID-19. And I'm just looking for your support to have this temporary emergency curbside pickup for local businesses. And this particular case is right on Greenwood Avenue. Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't know what steps are required. Certainly sounds business-friendly, reasonable, community-friendly. We're trying to pull everybody up by the bootstraps and help out here. I know in the past, the police chief can list signs about parking on his or her own and under emergencies. Certain funeral paros do it for funerals. They put out a temporary sign. So I'd ask the attorney, Attorney Marcello, whatever we have to do to make it happen, you have my support.
Councilman, just real quickly, because it's an emergency temporary curbside pickup, this would not require a second passage as ordinarily. If it was any type of ordinance, it would require a second passage. But under these circumstances, it would require only first passage and the businesses will be able to proceed with signs in those areas. Mr. Solicitor? You're on mute, please.
You are correct. We researched this and we believe this is the best way, most expeditions way to get this done.
Thank you, sir. Any council people, any council people have any questions? Nope, I support it. Thank you, sir.
So I've concluded.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Also move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Council President, that's not later on in the agenda. This was communication.
Oh, okay, I would have just, all right. With that being said, with that being said, then I won't go into details as I did this time with respect to the ordinance. I'll just ask for passage on it. Next item, Madam Clerk?
The next item under Council Communications is Day of Portugal Announcement. Councilwoman Souza?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, fellow council members and all in attendance. As we know, given the current circumstances that our country is under and with celebrations being limited to very few, given the new restrictions that have been lifted with the gathering of 15 people at any event, I felt like we could announce this fairly to the public, again, keeping within the guidelines. As always, we're in June, which we celebrate our Day of Portugal, which is June 10. The celebrations throughout the community and the state will still take place and flag raisins will still take place. Unfortunately, they won't be at the normal yearly celebrations that we are typically doing. So I did want to mention that the City of East Providence, along with Rhode Island's Day of Portugal, is still having our annual flag raising ceremony on June 9 at City Hall. Again, unfortunately, we can't have any more than 15 in attendance. So that would comprise of the Day of Portugal Committee with local city officials. But it will be broadcast live on Facebook for all to see. So I do welcome and invite all to tune into that. Again, I apologize, as many of the events throughout the summer are not going to be business as usual. We still are going to maintain our yearly cultural events and hope that, you know, everybody turns in. There'll be more information in a memo over the weekend and certainly look on Facebook Live or all the social medias for any other updates as to time that it takes place. Thank you.
Councilwoman Souza, what time will that take, please?
I'm sorry?
What time will that be on the night?
Between 9:00 and 9:30 at City Hall.
Thank you. Any other questions for the councilwoman? If not, Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to the next and final council communication.
Yes, Council President. The next is Continued Rodent Infestation in the City of East Providence. Councilwoman Souza?
I just wanted to put this up for a brief discussion, more of a announcement for what's to come. So we do have on the docket, as we see, a contract with MEGA for some reciprocals, an idea and a plan that myself, the mayor, his administration, I'm sure other council members have discussed regarding ways to combat the rodent and vermin issues that we have throughout the city. The weather is getting nicer and so they are coming out into the communities. I've had over the last two weeks, multiple emails and videos and pictures all kindly sent to me to remind me of what's going on this time of the year in terms of that. And I know with the work that happens in the roads and constructions that only, again, adds to displacement of their homes that they were living in quietly without us noticing. So one of the things that is being done, as we see on the, is to have reciprocals that each of the individuals in the city household dwellings will have. In that way, there's no trash bags on the curbside. People aren't putting trash bags in the backyard where, again, is a perfect opportunity for them to feed off of. Second part of that, which the council will see in the upcoming weeks, is I have been working on a comprehensive, multi-part litter, garbage, and rodent, vermin ordinance. It's taken a while because it's, again, multi-part. There's a lot of parts of, in the ordinance book and in the charter that it affects. So to keep it all fluent and relevant to different parts, it's taken me some time. So it should be on the docket, I'd like to say, either by the end of this, the next council meeting or one of the council meetings in July or August. I'm hoping more like this month. But it is a really good, comprehensive. I did get some input from the mayor's administration, you know, with terms of minimum housing, zoning, building officials. So it's been a collaborative effort to kind of get everybody's opinion, have multiple eyes look at it. So I really think it was well thought out and planned. So I look forward to presenting that to the council. I think the community is also going to appreciate the language and the strict guidelines that the city is going to require in terms of littering and keeping things within your property clean, dumping in public property or private property, all to, again, promote a nice, healthy, clean, sanitary, and safe city for all of us to continue to enjoy. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And again, that concludes Council Communications. One thing I want to bring to the council's attention is that I know that we have some people here for ordinances that are on this meeting and it looks like it's going to be a long, drawn-out agenda. And I'm wondering, at this point in time, should we move forward with anybody that's on the agenda that is here on behalf of an ordinance that we should possibly move up in an event that they don't have to go through all the details of what we have on this docket items? And in the past, we've always done that, where, you know, where attorneys have represented their clients and they come into our chambers and we move them up the docket. So I know there's a couple items on here, one of which by Attorney Augustine. I'm not sure if she's on the line or not.
She is there.
In addition to that, we have green development. And again, I just want to ask the council if they would like to move some of these up at this point in time. Because I'm sure they don't want to be on for the next hour plus here and what we have to say. All right, so with that being said, there is a petition for zoning change. And this is referring to the Planning Board for Review and Recommendation according to the City of East Providence. Would anyone oppose that we skip over to new business? And we go directly on the new business for item number C, which is a petition for zoning change? Would anyone have any objections to that? Is Attorney Augustine, Augustine here? Madam Clerk or Mr. Solicitor?
Go ahead, Solicitor. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I think Attorney Sakachi represents them as well as. But again, this is just an administrative matter, much like we did with the golf course. All this just needs a formal referral to the planning board. And then the council will have 65 days to get back the recommendations of the planning board, whether or not the zone change will be.
So as opposed to having Mr. Sakashi wait for the entire, you know, for the next several minutes, can we move him up and then there's other resolutions that I'd like to probably move up as well?
That's fine.
Is that all right? Is that all right with the council?
Mr. President, that's fine. I just want to add that similar to the last meeting, when we had a similar issue, we're not really worrying about merits one way or another tonight. We're just voting to send this to the planning board, right?
Correct.
So we can save a lot of time by, I would assume when the planning board gets back to us, we'll have a lot of questions then. And so would the public if it's at a public hearing. So tonight, the what's before us is just to send this to the planning board.
That's correct, Councilman.
I agree, Councilman Rodrick. We need someone to make a motion. I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have currently, we have a motion at this point in time by Councilman Morato. Councilman Morato, would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to send this matter to the, refer this to the Planning Board for Review and Recommendations according to the East Providence Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
All right, so before I go on to vote, I just want to ask Mr. Sakashi, would you, would you have any comments at this point in time or you prefer to just proceed in a vote?
I prefer to proceed with the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I should say, and thank you. And I just want to point out for all the council that we did have back in February, pre-COVID-8 neighborhood meeting and it was a lot of input from the community and we've taken that to consideration. So I thank you for your consideration, the whole council as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so we have a motion right now on the floor from Councilman Morato. Seconded by, who was that seconded by?
Councilman Cahoon.
Councilman Cahoon. Okay, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Morato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye, thank you. We also have police and fire. Thank you, sir. We also have police and fire on the call as well. We like to proceed in that manner, starting off with the, a letter from the police department. Anybody have any objections to this at this time?
I do not.
No, it's fine.
Okay, so with that being said, is anybody on the phone at this point in time for reports of other city officials? This will be 2020 Coronavirus Emergencies Supplement Funding Grant submitted by Captain Floyd Gardner. Is Captain Gardner on the, on the call as well? Or anyone from the police department representing this report? It does say communication only. If not, I'm going to proceed to the next one. A letter from Fire Chief Glenn Quick. Is the chief on as well?
I see Chief Carey and I also see Captain Potvin.
Or either, is anyone here from the police department to speak on behalf of the academy?
Oh, from the fire department? It looks like, it looks like Chief Carey would like to speak.
Okay, Chief Carey?
You're on, Chief Carey. You just have to unmute.
Pleasure of the council. If you have any questions, you're in receipt of the letter from the chief department. We wanted to increase the academy from 11 to 18 to 20. Right now, we're at 18 vacancies. One of them is a long-term injury that's probably never coming back to duty. And as we come into the summer months and we're already seeing it now, we're at critical mass for the number of personnel that we have.
So last year during the budget, we had this discussion. And I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head what the conclusion was as far as how many that we approved. Was that the 11?
We submitted 18 and it was cut to 11.
Okay. And now you're requesting to move it from 11 to 20?
Yes.
Okay.
Even if we plugged the holes for the 18, by the time this academy, which we haven't started yet due to COVID-19, the application process got slowed down, the background checks got slowed down. We've been working with the state academy throughout this to keep and hold a position that we could use the facility. And we even went back in and revamped how we're going to run it. So we'll do captive audience. We've extended it by 10 weeks. This reduced the cost in pay. Instead of paying probationary firefighters' level rate of pay, we pay the $600 a week academy pay for candidates so they can complete their EMT cardiac training in conjunction with the city school and the state academy.
Chief Carey? Good. I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
No, absolutely.
So the last budget season, I know that there were 11 vacancies. And I don't believe the council cut that money, those 11 vacancies, from the budget. Am I correct in that?
In actual budget process, we were not involved. That was the previous administration. I do know that we submitted 18 originally in our original packet, because I do have that. I don't know where it was cut, but it was cut to 11.
This last budget season, we were handed a long form. And there were a bunch of vacancies ranging from municipal service clerks, police officers, and then that also included vacant firefighter positions. To even include a vacant lieutenant spot, a vacant lieutenant spot for fire department. Have, the point I'm trying to get at is that I don't believe that this council cut any of that money for those vacancies. So would it be, let me ask you this. When does the academy start?
Right now, we project it started on July 1. We have.
And when will it finish? Will it finish after the October?
So if that's July 1, they would finish the state academy at the end of the fiscal year, October 30, by October 31. And then they would have an additional 18 weeks into the new fiscal year to complete their training. And then we would put them on as probationary firefighters. And we still have all the funds in our budget that was appropriated for the 11. And we can actually get this done and stay within the money that was budgeted for that, for the 11. Because part of that funding was six paydays at probationary firefighter rate. We've consolidated some of the costs by using the state academy facility and state academy tuition fees for instructors. So I can give you the breakdowns if you need them.
Correct. So my point, my, the point I was trying to get at, which is a long way around, so. So 11 during this last budget, the remainder of this budget season. And then the remainder could be picked up eventually in the next budget season.
That's correct.
So, and what would that, what would that number be in addition to? What would that number be adding more recruits for that training? What would that number be?
For this fiscal year, we, we had budgeted $552,801. That accounted for everything, including medical coverage, salary at probationary for six paydays, plus everything for the academy. We can start the academy, get them through the State Academy, pay for all the upfront costs, including the EMT school right out of this year's budget, even though it wouldn't take place until the beginning of next year's budget. And that would be totaling $368,079.60. So that leaves an additional $184,000 remaining from those funds for this fiscal year, which would help balance out what we're experiencing now. The following year, we would have to budget another $350,945.40 to cover the cost to complete the academy for the 20. And that's medical coverage, salary at catered pay, instructor costs, and that's about it.
And assuming that all recruits would graduate and go on a job, would that bring the Fire Department up to full complement? Or would there still be some vacancies after that?
If we did not incur any additional vacancies by the close of that class, we would be two over in strength, which would reduce overtime by plugging holes. If that's if we don't experience any more retirements between now and then.
The, I understand that retirements, just like police departments, a lot of times they go in waves.
Yes.
Experiencing that right now. What's, I just have one more question, I don't want to be late. It's what's the, with the shortage of manpower now, what is the overtime cost because of that for the city, for the Fire Department?
The cost is significant, I don't have the exact numbers with me, I didn't prep that number. But you can say that that, that cost is actually offset by the salaries that were for the people who are here, who retired. The salaries typically is 1.52%. One and a half times, 1.52, and overtime is 1.5. Although filling vacancies with a new firefighter is a lot cheaper than somebody at top staff. So kind of almost balances itself out and all the additional costs that we've incurred so far this year, it's probably going to be headed towards COVID-19. And we're probably going to be seeing some reimbursement, which I believe the Stafford Act is 75%.
I have one quick, one quick question for the chief. And excuse me if you had already, if the councilman had already asked this question and you answered it. The difference between the 11 and 18, which is obviously seven more, what is the dollar amount associated with that difference?
The dollar amount difference?
The cost for those candidates to be that you're looking for.
368, right?
368, is it?
So 368, 07960 would be this fiscal year, which is 184,72140 less than what we had appropriated for this class.
All right, but you, you said you approved for 11. You went in for 20, you approved for 11. But you're requesting, but you're requesting 18. So how, how much more money? I'm sorry?
We're not asking for more money for this year.
Okay.
We're actually going to spend less than what was appropriated.
But we're, we're almost halfway through this year, or we're halfway through this year. How much more would it be added to your budget?
We're not going to add anything to the budget, not, not out of the budgeted funds for this, this process. So we had $552,801 budgeted for this class, out of this year's budget.
For the class of 11?
For the class of 11.
Okay.
By paying the upfront cost for the cardiac school, and we're only going to be running it for 12 weeks, starting July 1st to the end of fiscal year. So we'd only incur $368,079.60, which is much less than the 552801. But we would have to make it up in the next fiscal year for an additional $350,945.40.
Council President?
Yes.
The, the mayor was hoping to contribute to the conversation, can I allow him in?
Sure.
Thank you. Mayor, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, because I was listening to the conversation, the, the city, the administration came to the council originally asking for funding to pay for 18 new recruits. At the time, when we formulated the budget, we understood that there was approximately, I think, 10 vacancies at the time. And we understood that there were going to be a lot more vacancies coming up. The council did authorize 11 new recruits. So as we started to prepare for this, there was severe delays because of the coronavirus, everything's delaying, everything, right? We got into a situation now where while all these delays are going and while the year goes on, so that the budget gets approved in October, November, we've had several retirements, I believe we're up to 18 vacancies right now. The, by contract, the contract is, is pretty strict with the Fire Department. There's minimum manning requirements. Our firefighters are being ordered back, and Chief Carey can expound on this more, at very large numbers currently, they're getting called back. Chief, can you, can you expound so the council understands how many people are getting called back on, on a regular basis?
So on every shift, we're, we're filling holes. Typically on a shift, some day shifts on slow days, it might be eight people being called back. And on busy days, it's probably in the teens.
And, and we haven't even hit vacation season yet, because a lot of people have been holding off on vacations because of the coronavirus. So what we're asking the council right now is, we, we worked on fine tuning the way we do the academy. So we're going to do a hybrid academy, instead of us running the whole academy ourselves. By the way, when we run an academy, we're one of few departments that run an academy, we take great pride in that fact. We have our own fire personnel do the training in that academy setting. That means when our fire personnel are there training, we have to backfill the empty positions. So while they're training their academy, we're paying overtime to fill the positions of those fire personnel. What we did to save money is we have a hybrid system going in, where part of it's going to be at the State Academy, part of it's going to be done in-house through our department, because we want to make sure that our firefighters know our policies, procedures, and the way we do things. In addition, I don't know if you guys caught this, the department this year, by contract, in years past, what happens is firefighters would graduate, they would become probationary firefighters, then they would have to go out and get their EMT certification. What we're doing is we're adding 10 extra weeks to their training to allow for them to get EMT certification while they're getting paid as recruits, as opposed to getting paid as probationary officers. So that's going to be a savings there also. So I guess what we're asking is, we wanted to inform the council that it's our, our opinion that it would make sense to send an academy of 20 through now. This would, the money, the, the money that was put aside for 11 would pay for this academy of 20 through to the end of the budget. And then we would want a commitment from the council that you understand the, the dire circumstances we're in right now, and that you would fund the balance of the academy into the next budget. So this is why we're coming before you today, just to inform you of the, the situation we're faced with right now. And, and just to clarify, like I said earlier, we did put in for 18 at the time anticipating vacancies.
Okay, and that difference again is the 368,000?
I believe so.
That you're looking to carry over for next year, next year's budget?
Is, is that the number? I don't have the numbers in front of me, Chief Carey?
If you look at the budget on what we're going to expend and what will be left over, the remainder of the 184,72140 that could be carried over to next year. If it, if it could be carried over, my understanding is at the end of the budget and the current process, it goes back to the general fund. The amount we would need to complete it next year would be 350,945.40. So if you did carry over the 184,72140, you could apply that towards the 350,945.40. But the overall cost to Councilman Brito's, and I believe Councilman Morado's question was, originally we were budgeted 552801. When you add the two numbers between the end of this fiscal year and then next fiscal year, it's going to cost 719025 to complete the academy as a whole. And if you deduct that from the original number, it's an increase overall for the academy portion alone, 166,224.
Let's look for.
That's, that'll be for a total of 20 or 18?
That would be for 20.
So then by, by my quick calculations, we had budgeted an amount of 55411, which basically roughs, works out to 55K per student to go through, per trainee to go through. What's being proposed here would work out closer to 30 per student to go through, since we're getting 20, given the numbers that Chief Carey just presented.
I think, I think part of the, this, this might have been missed because I know it was just glanced over. So the, the money that was allocated for this fiscal year, at the end of this fiscal year, there will be a balance of $184,000. I don't, and I, and I would have to check with our finance and with, with Mike Marcello. That money, having been encumbered for this academy, could we just carry that over? Or does it have to go into the capital improvement fund? Because anything that's a surplus usually goes into the capital improvement fund. So if it can be carried over for its intended purposes, then we wouldn't have to allocate that much more in the next budget. You follow what I'm saying?
There's a question to me, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Can I offer a suggestion? That Councilman Morado?
I'm thinking, my, my thinking would be, as soon as they, oh, I could be wrong, but as soon as they start the academy, they are technically employees of the city. They may not be union employees, union members, but they're technically employees of the city. So if that, if those 18 or 20 recruits, their training carry over into the new fiscal year, then that will also follow with them, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't think that would be an issue, looking at it that way, correct?
That, that's, that's my opinion, I too, I, I concur with Councilman Morado on that. But I just want to make sure that we are on solid ground and we will work to see, to make that happen. I think that would make sense. So, so we, Michael, so we have $184,000 that will be in surplus that was earmarked to train these recruits, the 11 recruits, okay? We'll have $184,000 that will be a surplus at the end of this fiscal year. Shouldn't that money just continue forward to, to facilitate an existing academy that started in this fiscal year? That's going to continue to the next fiscal year?
If, if it's encumbered, I think it would have to, yes. I mean, it's, it's an encumbered amount, it's just not expended in the fiscal year, but it's already been encumbered. But I just want to just chime in, this is just done for communication. And I think what, what the, what the, what the, what the purpose of the communication was is to inform the council members of this issue. And then to hope that if they have the support going forward in the budget cycle, that you'll be, you'll have to make these adjustments to the budget based upon this communication. If there's no stomach to do this, then I guess the administration would like to know that now. But we're not asking to make any decisions tonight, just kind of let you know where the thinking of the administration is. The fact of the matter is if they go forward with this 20, there will, there will be an encumbrance in next, in next year's budget and an expectation that the council will fund those additional positions.
So Mike, to that end, right? So let's say, for example, we do a look at the charter, we do a look at the, you know, applicable ordinances, and we determine for whatever reason that remaining 100, so let's call it 170K, cannot just be rolled over into the next year for the same expenditure. What prevents the council from extending that appropriation for that particular line, right? Instead of saying it needs to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, it can extend it to the next fiscal year, because Congress can do that with federal money.
And so can you.
Okay.
And, and I thought we have done that in the past with, you know, purchasing of equipment as well.
Correct, in other words, if you were to buy a contract for the delivery of 1,000 bricks, and you put $500 down for, you know, for this fiscal year, but it's not, and, and you only spent 250 because you didn't get the, the full bricks, but you, but it's already encumbered, you can spend the extra money. It's, it's been encumbered already, so it just, it just happens to flow over to the next fiscal year. So I don't think, this is really a Malcolm question, the Finance Director. I don't think the money, the money is encumbered, so it doesn't, it, it doesn't flow into the general fund because it's been encumbered.
President? Yeah, I, I think it's, it's clear that that's encumbered monies that can follow the program. And I would just add my sentiment that, my recollection is we did cut back the school. They, they wanted 18, we said 11 at the budget process, you know, trying to keep our numbers thin. And I think now it's wise to, with these retirements, with the pandemic, with the school, one of the cities that operates it is us, rather than trying to have two separate academies, let's keep it going and let's put more in there. Paying the overtime has been an annual problem in this city. And I think we need to stop that bleeding as, as soon as possible. So we're not voting tonight, but my sentiment is that I'm, I'm in agreement for the most part with this memo that we have in undercommunication.
And thank you, Councilman. I mean, as opposed to the belaboring this, this is on for communication only. We will have that opportunity to discuss this further as we go on during the budget season as well. So we have an idea, the cat is out the bag at this point in time. So everybody knows exactly what the Fire Department is looking for, Councilman?
May I add one thing, Mr. President? I, I do support this idea, just so Mayor, Chief, you know, I would expect this to be, to come back in the form of some kind of return at budget time with regard to what the overtime ask is for next year. So I mean, if we're looking at an overtime number that's the same as or higher than our current overtime number, and we're adding 20 people, I'm very definitely going to ask why that is. So I just, I just want to make that clear.
It makes sense, Councilman, it makes sense.
Council President?
Yes.
Finance Director Moore was hoping to contribute to the conversation, would you like him? Would you like to have him?
Sure, this is, sure.
Hello, this is Malcolm Moore.
Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mr. President. Yes, I wanted to say that when we were doing part of the budget earlier today, we had 15 vacancies in the Fire Department. And we've already had a couple of people talk to us about putting in their retirement papers. So, you know, if you did 11, we would be far short by the time that academy was done. And the monies that would be encumbered, as the solicitor said, would be reserved in the fund balance. So it would roll over, it rolls over. So instead of, instead of showing, say, $15 million of free cash or unrestricted cash, there'd be another 180,000 or something that would be restricted in fund balance, because it's been an amount that's been appropriated, but wouldn't be expended to the following year. So you could do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for that explanation. Appreciate you jumping in on this and letting us know. So we know what we, we have to do next time. I just want to move this meeting along because we do have a lot on the agenda this evening. And we do have some folks on the line that have been waiting patiently. So again, and I'm going to, at the request of the council, that is there anything on here that we have folks that are waiting for their presentation or otherwise that we can kind of jump around a little bit before we get to our own ordinances? I like to get them on the mics and start with any other ordinances that we may see at this point in time.
I think, if I may, the resolution regarding the Walsh Company for emergency placement of two-inch water main.
Okay. Do, do we also have anyone on the line for, that is waiting on this councilwoman? If not, let's.
I think we may see, I don't know if somebody's on there, if they want to raise their hand. I think I see a name that's familiar that might be, but I, you know, without having full names in the audience, I'm not actually sure.
So.
And I missed public comment, so I don't know who spoke at public comment.
We just had three people that spoke at public comment, Jason DeRozia, Chrissy Rossi, and Bob Rodrick.
Council President, my, my suggestion, we would just go right to the resolutions with the contract with MTG disposal. And then if you want to move down to the resolution regarding the two-inch water main, that's fine. But, and then American Communication, I think you just put on file, that would have to do with the charter, so.
Very good. So councilwoman, you want to, you want to proceed with the resolution?
With the water, the Walsh water main?
Water main or the MTG disposal?
Okay, I see the MTG disposal. Let me get that one back. So again, there was, there's been the, I have to commend the mayor's office and his administration for the work that they put into this. It's been a long time coming and it was a Part I type of solution to help assist with the, you know, trash and rodent in, in the city. So negotiating. So negotiating this, we know that there's been change over in the management of ownership of the company, so that too was a factor in trying to get the best negotiation that we could for the city. I did have, though, some questions, so I don't know if there's Steve Kudo is, I think, on here, the Director of Public Works. I did have some questions for him in regards to the contract as it pertains to pickup. I know right now we have our recycling that's every two weeks, and I think I read somewhere in the contract that the trash would be every two weeks if we went into this, and that was a little concerning to me, so I just want him to correct my misunderstanding or correct or confirm that that is what was going to be happening. Is Steve available?
Councilwoman Souza, he is available. Would you like me to have him contribute to the conversation?
Please, I would, thank you. And he could provide us some more.
Sure. Steve?
Mr. Kudo.
This mute on?
Got, let's see, hold on just a second, there's two different signings.
There he is, there he is. Mr. Kudo, there you go, this is off now. Yes, we can now, now we can.
Excellent.
Hi, Mr. Kudo, how are you?
Good, how are you, councilwoman?
Great, thank you. So we're just discussing the MTG disposable contract for the trash. I just had a couple of questions in regards to the contract. Is this, would the trash be picked up, continue, be picked up on a weekly basis?
Yes.
Okay, so that wasn't going to change because that was a concern, and I think that might have been some old language that I was looking at. Recyclable will still be every two weeks, and that has nothing to do with yard debris?
Correct. So nothing changes with recycling or the yard debris, it's just the trash.
Okay. And the trash reciprocals, are they going to be the ninety gallon?
They're going to be the largest size, similar to the size of the recycling carts, ninety-five gallon carts.
Ninety-five, okay. And if a, so it's, to my, to the best of our knowledge, it's one per dwelling or household with the option for residents, if they needed to have more in their households, is that correct?
Yes, we're going to be delivering one per dwelling unit. I think that should be sufficient. A ninety-five gallon cart, I mean, it's equivalent to, you know, three, you know, thirty-gallon regular-sized trash cans that you normally see. We haven't decided yet, I mean, we could always provide another cart, but whether we charge for that extra cart is yet to be determined.
Because I know some of the concerns that were brought to my attention from residents are some people have large families and accumulate a lot of trash and use multiple, you know, three to four trash reciprocals at their home, and they were concerned that they wouldn't have be able to fit that all into that one trash reciprocal, and if they would have the option to get another one, much like the recycling bins. I know for myself, I I wouldn't need it because I don't accumulate that much trash, but on the other end, I need it for my recycling bins because I do recycle a lot. So I'm one of those that, you know, requires multiple recycling bins because I just recycle a lot of stuff. So I just was trying to find, you know, if, I don't want it to be a problem where we're we're using the reciprocals, but people then are still placing trash on the outside of their reciprocals, which aren't going to be picked up because now it's a truck that's coming by and manually lifting and dumping the reciprocals.
Right. And that's why I think we decided, the city administration decided to go with the larger carts. And like I said, it should be more than sufficient to handle, you know, an average-sized dwelling. I think if we get into a situation where they think that they're going to be overflowing, that we would actually go and see what they're putting out there, and maybe they could be recycling more. So, you know, it'd be also a case-by-case basis.
That would be great.
Steve, if I can jump jump in, it's Bob Rodrick's.
Yes.
Question. So the the money of this works out, the dollars work out as interest-free loan, right? I'm looking at the increased cost would be about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars over sixty months, six oh months, you know, five years. So at about a hundred and fifty-four thousand a year, zero percent interest, so that appears to be a good deal. It isn't something we could go out and do on our on our own. So we we're spreading out the cost of this over five years?
That's correct. And, you know, and we are getting a good deal because we are, the the carts are going into production at the same time as the City of Pawtucket as well. So I think just the mass quantity of carts has brought that cart price down.
And that's great. And and one of the things I know we're trying to do is avoid people throwing trash bags on the ground.
That's correct.
So will that be part of policy that you you can't do that? I know it'd be hard to police a hundred percent, but little by little, hopefully people will get the point, but that that's.
That's gonna, that's gonna be something that we're working on, as Councilwoman Souza mentioned earlier. A new set of ordinances regarding litter and trash setouts is will be put in place. So once we know exactly which route we're going in, we can develop the ordinances to kind of accommodate, you know, how we're doing this with the with the cart system.
Okay. And and lastly, no change in picking up bulky items or mattresses, same basic policy by appointment, and is a limit to so many that the city can do per month or per year?
Yeah, mattresses are picked up by appointment, and we will probably be looking at bulky waste items being picked up by appointment as well.
So just to spin off that with the mattresses, I know in the past, the policy was that you one one mattress per household. Would that remain the same?
Well, we currently do a one set, so whether it's mattress in box spring, you know, if there's two mattresses, so that would that would remain the same. But right now, we do not charge for any of those pickups, although it does it does cost us fifteen dollars per unit to get picked up.
And it was, there was a charge for the public at one time, if I'm not mistaken, and it was a limited amount.
We have never charged for the mattress.
Oh, we haven't. Okay. I know there was a limited amount that you can per pickup, there was seventy, now that's what, increased to one hundred?
Yeah, we do them twice a month, and so it's limited by the the size of the truck that can pick up on a Saturday. So it's about between a hundred and a hundred and ten mattresses in our box springs per pickup today.
Mr. Kudo, the question I have with respect to this trash pickup, is is the trash pickup now going to be automated, like the recycle?
Yes.
So with that being said, if you do have a bulky item, for an example, a roll-up carpet, and in addition to that, you have your trash, does that roll-up carpet now no longer where people will put on the curb side, people will put on their lawn for pickup, that carpet will no longer get picked up?
We would have to have, we would have a special pickup for those.
If it doesn't fit in that ninety-five gallon.
That's correct.
Recycle bin?
Yes.
So any of the bulky items now for per household will no longer get picked up?
No, they will get picked up, but we will have a special pickup day for them.
Much like when, like, somebody puts out an old appliance or something, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you can drop it off at the the Public Works garage and or call and get a tag for that piece of bulky item or mattress, correct, Steve?
Yes. The the metal-type items, say, appliance, appliances, an old stove, an old refrigerator, that is also a separate pickup, basically because those items can be recycled through a metals recycler. And and so we do have a ten-dollar pickup tag for those items. We do those once a month. We don't, we don't really generate that many pickups for those. Residents can drop those off for no cost at the at the DPW Yard. But that's that's items that are metal-based only, the appliances, stoves, refrigerators, things like that.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm having technical difficulty at this point in time with audio and visual. Everybody at this point in time is frozen, I don't know if they haven't or experienced the same.
You're coming in clear.
Okay, I'm not having that, I'm not having the same results. Mr. Kudo, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, loud and clear. Can you hear me?
I do not think you can. So I want to say, Councilman Rodrick, I just wanted to let you know, in my, in the ordinance that I am going to be presenting, it does address bags that are not in the reciprocals for trash, in that certain violations do come with violation monetary fees if you get tagged once, twice. So it'll be, obviously, when everything changes over, it'll be a learning, you know, we get a warning just to let you know because it's practice that'll be have to be adjusted to. But I think it's pretty obvious when you get a big reciprocal docked off at your house that that's what you'd be using for your trash. But there is, it is, that is, that language will be in the ordinance, it has already been placed in the ordinance.
Great. And one one little aside I'd like to add, which I think would be connected to the rodent control, we have a city resident who is probably the preeminent expert in in New England on on rodent control, and I'm sure Mr. Kudo has worked with him, but the the famous or infamous big blue bug, the the person behind that is Tony DiJesus, who's an East Providence graduate, lives here in the city, and is always willing and welcome. He has a weekly radio show, and I know I've talked to him about the situation in East Providence, so at some future council meeting, I'd like to invite him in to answer questions. He has a lot of ideas and suggestions beyond all of this, which is the foundation that we have to do. But beyond all of this, what we as a city can do additionally, as well as homeowners? So Tony DiJesus, if you're watching, watching, you're going to get a phone call one of these months to come and do your thing and be a townie rodent expert.
I'm sorry.
I like the direction that this is going.
I'm sorry, I just lost audio and visual for when I had asked my question about bulky items being picked up, and I didn't hear the answer. So the the example I gave was a carpet or rug that's being put out, Mr. Kudo, those type of items that do not fit in those bins will no longer get picked up?
No, we will pick them up, but there will be a special pickup by appointment.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Kudo?
Yes.
So when was this last contract by Mego set to expire? Because we haven't, we haven't been to five years, it hasn't been five years yet, correct?
No, it it was set to expire in twenty twenty-three, so we're about to enter into the third year.
And what, you you know, you remember what the actual cost was going to be for those five years?
So so the the base, the the number of the the contract number is not changing, we're only getting charged for the price of the carts.
Was the last agreement around five million dollars, or am I mistaken?
Councilman, if you look at the, if you look at the Second Amendment, it has the prices for years one, two, three, so it's two-point-two million.
I understand that. The reason why I'm asking it's because it's, I want to know if this one year, two, all the way to five, if that's the same as the current contract or has that gone on?
No, it's the same.
Okay.
Same.
That's my question. Thank you.
The only thing that this resolution is, sorry, councilman, the only thing this resolution is doing is extending the current contract for two years at the current price, but we're adding an additional cost of the of the carts and for a price of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, but we're carrying that, we're basically, it's an interest-free loan. So in return for the interest-free loan, we're agreeing to extend the contract for additional two years.
Okay.
So any further questions? I move for approval.
Just so the public understands and knows where we where we stand on this, we are currently on the reports of other city officials. We're under item D, which is resolution, and the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension for the refuse recycle collection contract with MTG Disposal LLC. We do have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza for for approval of this resolution. Would anyone like to second that?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Rodrick. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Council President. Councilman Kahoon.
Vote aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so moving right along and extending the invitation for those who are out there that I'm sure would like to get up at this point in time, any resolution or ordinance that we can move up on the agenda to get those people off the line. Do we have any motion or would anyone, not a motion, but recommendation from any council person to move any line item up the docket at this time?
Can we move up the Walsh Company? Water pipe, yeah. Three, eight, five.
Okay. So, okay, so that's, that is, that is.
Up next.
Page five on the on the resolutions. It will be item number, extension of the, item number three?
Item number three.
Okay, item number three, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension with W Walsh Company for emergency replacement of a two-inch water main.
Mr. Kudo's still on the line. Mr. Kudo's still there?
Yes, he is.
So the reason why Councilwoman Souza, myself, and Vice President Rodrick are sponsoring this resolution, if you don't mind me speaking on this, Councilwoman Susan and Councilman Rodrick.
Please.
So I've I've met with the a few residents on that road for a few months now, but one in particular that lives at the very end of that Indian Road. And I've seen the water, the water quality that they've had to use over the years, I think roughly around nine years, and let me tell you, it's not something that I would want to bathe in, cook with, or drink, and and it's unfair to those residents to have that type of water quality, and I think we pay enough for our water to begin with. But the only question I have of Mr. Kudo looking at this, for Indian Road, is this to replace or align that water or line? As of right now, there's no determination, correct, unless they make or excavate or look into the pipe, is that correct, Mr. Kudo?
Right now, we're we're proposing to clean and and line the the pipe, not to replace it.
And that will.
Right, I think the replacement, councilman, is for the other project. The Indian Road is just the clean and line.
So with that cleaning and lining. That cleaning and lining, will that be a permanent solution to that issue?
We believe it'll be a permanent solution. We we also got a price, we looked at replacing that line, and it was well over three hundred thousand dollars.
So I don't have a water issue in my street, I don't know any of my friends or relatives that do, is that a water line that was used at some point on that particular street that's not used anymore, or what's contributing to that rusty color?
Well, if it if it was, it's an older cast iron main, and you're getting kind of a rust situation going on, that's causing the water to turn orange. So what they do is they put the line out of service, everyone everyone will be getting above ground, and you see this done often, we've done it a lot in other parts of the city. It's a very cost-effective way to rehabilitate an older cast iron water main. They put everybody on temporary water services, they make make sure the line is completely, you know, devoid of any water, they clean that line, and then they put a cement coating inside the main. So the pipe itself is still good, you know, structural integrity, but it's the interior coatings that are creating the the problem, or lack of, lack thereof of the coating.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Kudo, would that be the exact same procedure they do or similar to Narigetsu Bay Commission when they're re-aligning the sewer lines?
It's it's somewhat similar, councilman, but it may be used a different type of product with the with the water main. with the water main.
Okay. All right. So, again, just to remind everyone, we are on page five on number three, resolution authorizing mayor to enter into a contract extension with W Walsh Company for emergency replacement of two inch. Is it a replacement? Again, it says here replacement, but we're not looking to replace it. We're looking to clean?
It's actually, it's actually two, two separate projects. One is to clean and line the water main on Indian Road to resolve the water quality issues that the residents in that area have been having to deal with the past number of years. And the second one is to actually upgrade a water main on a section of North Hull Street, which is undersized. It's a two-inch line. We've had some new property development, just single-family homes being built in that area. And in advance of our, because we're also planning to pave that road, before we get in it to pave the road, we want to upgrade that line from a two-inch to a six-inch line.
But that's a separate, is that a separate one?
That's a separate project, yes.
Resolution? Okay. So, right now, we're looking at two?
Council President, it's the same resolution, but the contract is under one. So, it's two projects in one contract that we'll be voting on tonight.
Okay. And do we have a dollar amount associated for the public?
Yes. So, the total, so the cleanup, the India, Indiana, Indian Road is going to
180,000?
Yeah.
108.
108.
Okay, 108,000. Okay. And the upgrade?
108,000. And then for North Hull Street, it is 145,497 for the replacement and upgrade of that water main from a two-inch to a six-inch, which totals 253,696 dollars in funds, which are coming from the Water Enterprise Capital Improvement Account. Nothing affects the taxpayer.
Any further questions from the council at this point in time?
Um, I just.
If not, Council, I'm sorry, Councilman Kahoon, I'm freezing up again.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to, I was, my computer froze, and I missed the, and I'm sure it's fine, the question regarding, we're not replacing Indian Road, we're just simply cleaning it. And we're assured, Mr. Kudo, that the, it's not going to reoccur or re-rust, or once it's cleaned out thoroughly, that line is going to be similar to the rest of the city in terms of water quality. There will be no five years, 10 years down the line, subsequent issues.
Right. I mean, well, we've had good success using this method in other locations of the city and other dead-end streets where the line just terminates.
Okay.
We've had similar situations, and we've gone in, and we've cleaned and lined, and not have a full disruption of, you know, ripping up the roadway and putting in a whole new water main, which is, you know, really costly. And that has resolved the situation.
And what do they line up the pipeline with?
Cement.
Cement, okay.
And I apologize.
I'm sorry. Does that then create a narrower pipe? Does that lose, do they lose the girth of that?
No, it's very nominal, Councilwoman, so.
Okay. So, there's not gonna affect the water pressure?
Correct.
Okay.
I apologize because my, again, I'm losing audio and visual. It's in and out at this point in time. So, I don't know if you can hear me.
We can now, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to, for approval of resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extended with the W Walsh Company for emergency replacement of a two-inch water main and clean in line of the water main on India Road.
I second that.
I'm second.
I'm back online. I'm sorry. I lost, I lost everyone for a moment. I'm back online. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm just having some technical difficulties at this time. I don't, I missed the last 15 seconds.
Council President, a motion was made by Councilwoman Souza to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter the contract for the extension of the, by W Walsh Company, who I think was seconded by Councilman Morado.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. Again, just to reiterate what I have asked before, if we have anything on the item that we'd like to move up. I know there's some.
Council President, I'd like to move up number five in the resolutions, where we're entering a contact, a contract with agreement, a sales agreement with Green Development.
Sure. That's on page five, ladies and gentlemen, if you follow us according to our docket items. And that is the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a net metering credit sales agreement with Green Development LLC. Councilwoman, you want to take it from here?
Yes, please. So, over the course of the last few years, the city and the council, previous councils have had, and administrations have had conversations on metered renewable energy and how, what the benefit is to the city, cost-wise, and just kind of in general, how this is going forward, what not only is good for the city, but what other municipalities and throughout the country have been doing in terms of renewable energy. At the time, there was a long, extensive RFP program that went into effect. There was a consultant that the city had hired that gave his opinion, and.
Yes, that Councilwoman Souza has frozen.
Am I?
So, I've been experiencing this in and out. Can you all hear me?
I can hear you, Councilwoman Souza. I can hear you, too. Oh, you can?
Okay, now I can hear.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Councilman Morado, are you on? I see Councilwoman Kahoon's moving around. Okay. I'm sorry. Proceed. You all were just freezing up for a little bit.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm not sure. Is there somebody that has a question in the, in the audience about something? I saw somebody mention something about a question. Well, if anybody has a question that's in the audience, please feel free to raise your hand, and the city clerk will speak with you. And then pertaining, you know, if it's relevant to the agenda item, certainly can chime in. So, again, we've entered some, we've looked into this net metering. The savings in the city was substantial. It went from not only just the city, but also including the school, housing authority, and how overall, one, it would be, it was also included with our LEDs at the time. I don't know where we stand with the LEDs right now, but the net metering is something, again, that is an immediate savings to the city, and I think is a really good program for the city to look into and move forward. Initially, the contract was, I believe, for 20 years. So, there was some concern, some hesitancy because of such a long contract, which I could understand because things change, prices change, and being locked into a 20-year contract wasn't comfortable for all parties. I think this is a good solution or medium where we're entering into a one-year contract with no obligations to stay within that contract if we find that it is not a fit for the city. But the costs would still benefit the city in the one year for, it was 200, and I don't have the number right in front of me. I don't know, Councilman Kahoon, if you have that number in front of you. 254. Mike, do you have it?
240, I believe, Councilwoman. 240,000, estimated.
Estimated, sure. So, I don't know if council members have any questions. I believe there was going to be representation from, I see Hannah's on in the attendance, if she wants to, if we could let her in to speak on or answer any questions. I see Mr. McCauley's also in attendance. If he has, if they could bring them in, Cristiano Capizio. Because I think some council members had, may have some questions, rightfully so. Anytime we enter into a contract and we're not familiar with things, we want to get all our answers and our ducks in a row. So, I welcome any discussion or questions. Again, this is something that I've been looking into. I feel very confident that this is a good direction for the city. And of course, with any cost savings, I think it's really important that we look into those types of things moving forward. So, I yield to the council.
I could tell you, I made a couple of attempts to read this over the weekend, and I got as far as seven of 32 pages, and I just didn't quite get it, to be quite honest with you, as far as the language in the contract, everything. It's just, you know, and I'll say it was just overwhelming and confusing for me personally, because I just didn't understand it as a whole.
I got a few questions if I may at some point.
Is that you, Councilwoman Kahoon?
That's me, Morado.
Oh, Councilman Morado. Okay.
So, I'm not, I'm not against what Councilwoman Souza's doing. I'm not against green energy. And I know that this topic has come up in the previous council. I sat in the audience, and I heard the debate back and forth. And then recently, we also heard from Green LLC as this council, going back, I'd say, a couple of months before the coronavirus. But there's a couple of things that I am concerned about. As Councilman Britto just mentioned, you know, we received this contract on Friday. And to be honest with you, whether, if I received this contract Friday or a month ago, I'm not a contract attorney. And, you know, I did try to read through this. I got through, I think, the third page, and I already had a lot of questions. And just based on that alone, Mike, have you had a chance to take a look at this contract yet, our solicitor?
Yes, Councilman. So, just to give you a little bit of background, net metering is a very technical topic, and it's very confusing. I agree with you. So, we've been negotiating this contract since February. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been, the city has been negotiating this contract since January or February, when we were approached by Green Energy. Because of the technical nature of this and the uniqueness of it, I, this is one of the few occasions when I went off the reservation, we hired Attorney Christian Capizio, who's also on the line today, who mostly did the negotiate, who actually did most of the drafting for us and some of the negotiations. So, I've been working with him for the last, well, since February to get this finalized. So, to the extent that you have any questions, you know, technical or otherwise, we'll happily answer them. But yes, this is a very complicated area. As Councilwoman Souza did indicate, when we were first approached, I believe it was actually a 40-year contract that they asked us to enter into. And quite frankly, because of the uncertainty of the energy market and the uncertainty of renewables, we weren't, I was in favor of it, and we were able to come to basically, what basically is a one-year agreement. So, that's the most, that's the most protection that the city could actually get, because if they don't meet the terms, we can get out of this contract within a year.
Here's some of my concerns. This is some of my points, and maybe I'm wrong. This is some of the research I did, right? So, I'm on firm ground that the Rhode Island PUC has utilities paid-for study called the Baldwin Study. It's similar to a study that was ordered by Attorney General Ealy in Massachusetts back in 2018. That study called for competitor supply or a third-party marketers that showed that over a five-day study, residential and commercial people in the state of Rhode Island all lost millions by leaving National Grid or net meeting, metering, or buying credits and so on. So, there's also a PUC docket, which to them, it's called an investigation when they put something on the docket, that speak about the same issue. Okay? My question is, is, you know, is this a fixed rate? Is it a variable rate? Based on my research, because if it's a variable price, we pay what the market pays. So, in differences, in different times of the year, it would be very cheap. As of right now, electricity is very cheap. There's not a high demand. We're not heating our homes and so on. In comparison, this month, Green LLC could probably save and beat National Grid prices. However, what National Grid does, they take the price over 12 months and average it out. So, right now, National Grid is probably, and just using an analogy, let's say, 1 kilowatt hour, 6 cents, probably 6 cents per kilowatt hour. But the standard offer is probably more like 10 cents per kilowatt hour in the winter months, when electricity is high due to powering the plants, boilers, heaters, and so on, as I mentioned. So, you know, what National Grid does is they blend their price, okay? So, companies such as Green LLC come into municipalities, and, you know, they, I understand the pitch. I get it, especially in the spring months when the demand is not as high. But what happens in the off months? What happens in the winter months and so on? What I'm proposing is that for tonight, there's a lot of questions still on the table. You know, this PUC study, this Baldwin Study, I would really like to look at that. I would like to look and see what other municipalities have gone through. For example, there was a recent article in the Pro Joe that Green LLC is suing two municipalities right now for $285 million, Coventry and Exeter. I'd like to know why. Okay? From what my understanding is that, you know, these municipalities have signed contracts with Green LLC, but there's no supporting ordinances or legislation to follow through with the contract, and then they end up suing the municipalities. And there's even a quote in the Pro Joe by Mr. Mark Di Pasqual that basically states that they throw lawsuits at municipalities and hope that they settle instead of facing litigation. And to our council members, we, that sounds very familiar to a lot of these claims that we have settled. And I just don't feel like we need to enter into an agreement like this. There's no reason to slow this down a little bit. There's no reason to pause for a minute and have these questions answered. So, you know, based on, you know, what I'm reading in the paper, the recent Pro Joe, speaking to former council members from Coventry who are still facing lawsuits, I don't think it's fair to enter this tonight. I really don't. We need to really do our due diligence on this. You know, that's all I have.
At the pleasure of any other council person who'd like to speak, or I do see where there's a Kristen and a Hannah on the line as well. Council prefer to hear from them at this point in time? Or would you like to, you have anything to include or interject into the conversation?
Councilman, as I indicated, Christian Capizio is the city's lawyer on this. He might want to respond to that. And I know that Hannah represents Green Development, so she may have something to say.
All right. Very good. Madam Clerk, may we let Kristen into the conversation, please? Mr. Capizio?
Where is, oh, Christian, Christian is actually already in the conversation, and so is Hannah. They both had their hands up.
Okay.
You guys can absolutely speak, Christian and Hannah.
Yeah. Yeah. Can every, can, council members, can you hear me? This is Christian Capizio. I'm getting some stuff from council members.
I can, yes.
All right. Thank you. So, my name is Christian Capizio, and I was brought in by the city to review the document. The document was presented to us in a draft form from Green Energy. Just by way of background and introducing myself, I am an environmental and energy attorney. I chair the Energy and Environmental Practice Group at Partridge, Snow and Han in Providence. Prior to that, I served for 10 years with the Rhode Island Attorney General's Office, where I led the Environmental Crimes Task Force under AG Lynch and AG Kilmartin. I worked with the City of East Providence on the TLA Pondview and worked with the city's police and fire and investigations. In 2015, I entered into the private sector and was doing energy work. And the reason why Mike and the mayor asked me to come in is that I negotiate these types of agreements, not only for municipalities, but for landowners and developers. So, I have a unique perspective. I get to see from all sides of these negotiations what the risks are. So, Mike and the mayor had asked me to take a look at this agreement back in February, and that's when I got involved with the agreement. As Councilwoman Souza indicated, there were discussions back, I believe, in 2018 and 2019 with the city as it relates to net metering. And as you may know, with net metering credit agreements, basically, the city is able to save on their energy bill by purchasing net metering credits from a facility, solar facility or wind facility in another jurisdiction. In this case, Green is presented, and as Solicitor Marcelo indicated, originally, the net metering credit agreement was presented to the city as a 40-year agreement. That is not unusual, because the longer the term, the better savings municipalities and other nonprofit entities can receive from renewable energy net metering credit agreements. Here, we strike that. Green came back and said, let's do a year. And one of the reasons why I was more comfortable and advised the city that a year agreement would be better is, and Councilman Kahoon had raised this, Green's projects currently right now are in development. The one project that's slotted for this net metering credit agreement is in the town of West Greenwich. It's a 20-megawatt, 210-megawatt solar facility that's received all its approvals at the local level. And it's slotted to save the city, I believe it's 25% discount on its energy bills from this project. Hannah can actually discuss, Councilman Murato, the questions you had about fixed and variable rates to the net metering, I think she can answer that. But the bottom line is this agreement, just to frame the agreement, it's a one-year agreement. Green has one year from the execution of the agreement to reach commercial operation date. What that means is they have a year to get their system online. The system that they are proposing to have come online is the West Greenwich facility, which is slated to come online in December of 2020 at the latest January of 2021. The city does not, Councilman Murato, you indicated correctly, the city does not receive savings until a system can be turned on, until a system reaches commercial operation date. So the one-year agreement allows Green to turn on their system and for the city to receive those savings as soon as it's turned on. If Green does not turn that system on within that year, the city can terminate their agreement and negotiate with other renewable energy developers to serve their energy needs.
So let me ask you this, these other municipalities that have been sued by Green, and going by what they are going through right now, do we have the ordinances, the legislation to support this type of contract, this type of deal at the moment in the City of East Providence?
Councilman, I think, sorry, I think I can actually, I think, from best I can tell, and maybe Christian can help me out, but best I can tell, those issues that we're suing other towns have to do with the development of the actual projects, the solar fields, the wind turbines, whatnot, within those projects, whether they got proper planning and zoning board approval. So that's between Green and those municipalities, where Green is alleging there's either, you know, some kind of hole up in the approvals or they didn't follow the right process or whatnot. And I'm sure Green can speak to that. That is a separate issue as to this contract. This contract only basically says, we are going to sell you renewable energy credits, we are going to sell you renewable energy credits from a project in West Greenwich. They have one year in which to get that project online. And if they do not get that project online in one year, they do have a right to try to go to another project. And so, you know, they have one year to get a project online, whether it's in West Greenwich or somewhere else. There's no, there's no underlying ordinance that the city, our city, needs because these projects are not in our community. But my best understanding of those other lawsuits is that those have to do with the ways that Green believes that these other municipalities are causing them by not approving their regular projects, and I can speak more to that. So there's nothing that the city needs to get the savings from this contract, other than to sign the contract. If we don't enter the contract, we don't get the credits and we don't get the savings.
Is there any way to get that PUC, that Baldwin report, that Susan Baldwin report, to see what we're getting into and what the other complaints were? And what that study revealed, is there any way to get that for us before, you know, council, before we make a decision on this?
This is Hannah from Green. If this is an appropriate time for me to jump in, I think it might help for me to explain the mechanics of the program and the pricing a little bit and how the city's savings actually relate to any posted rates by National Grid.
Yes, please, thank you, Hannah.
So I'm Hannah Marini, I'm the Director of Business Development with Green Development. We have been working with the City of East Providence for a few years now, trying to figure out, trying to help the city participate in these remote net meters and this remote net metering program that has saved many cities and towns in the state substantial sums of money. So we're trying, we've been trying to work with the city and helping, and helping to help you meet those same goals. So the way this program works, Councilman Murato, you're absolutely correct that the rate configuration is extremely complicated. But the way this program is simplified in our proposal to the City of East Providence is not, you're not purchasing power from us, you're entering into a savings program. And the savings program is a guaranteed discount rate from National Grid. So no matter what National Grid's rate is posted at, their net metering credit rate, you are guaranteed a 25% discount from that posted rate. So you're not actually buying kilowatt hours from us and having to keep track of posted rates and on the spot market and things like that. You are purchasing a guaranteed savings.
So then, I'm oversimplifying this and sorry for that. So how does your company, how does your company make money then? If you're offering, you know, a 25% less than National Grid? How does that make, you know, a profit for your company then?
So to put it simply, there are only certain, there are only certain entities in the state of Rhode Island that can actually participate in these remote net metering programs. And cities and towns are one of them. So you are actually credited at a higher rate than anything that you pay, and you keep a percentage of it, you pay the other 75% of that massive credit that you receive. You pay the other 75% of that to Green Development. And that helps us to pay down our project debt and operate the projects effectively.
And how does signing this contract now, in say, a year or two, when the city finally moves and, you know, buys the LED into the LED project? And that cost savings now go down, switching the, you know, the streetlights to LED? How does this, how does that scenario work into this contract?
That's an excellent question, and it's actually come up several times. So we do not recommend that the city purchase, sign up for 100% of your energy consumption. I think we have you right now in the contract at only about 80% of the approximately 7 million kilowatt hours a year that you use. So that leaves room for, that leaves room to ensure that you're not purchasing more credits than you need. And again, this is only for a one-year contract to help the city get familiar with the savings, the benefits of this savings program. So if we realize that you're about to undertake a major LED savings program and 80% is too much after the year contract, we could reduce that to 60% if you want, if something that you're comfortable with. And that is something that the mayor has expressed to us repeatedly, that he does not, he wants to make sure that the city is not on the hook for more than it needs. So we actually received three years of your electric consumption, the city's electric accounts from National Grid. We've analyzed those and we came up with an average and took 80% of that. So we can take a deeper dive into that during the course of this 12 months to see if the 80% is even too much. But there is room built in to make sure that energy efficiency is still a good idea. Because truly, I mean, people like me that are in the energy world, we fully understand that it makes a lot more sense to reduce your consumption of electricity before you go getting, you know, producing it from elsewhere.
So where in this contract does it make that reference to the purchase of 80%? Because when I look at Page Six, Article Four, the way I'm reading it, it says 100%. And again, I'm not a contract lawyer.
So it's actually, the actual volume of production is in the exhibits. And I believe it's Exhibit C that talks about the actual assets.
So what's that Article Four on Page Six, which references Exhibit A? Seller agrees to buyer and buyer agrees to purchase and accept all of seller's rights, titles, interests. So 100% of the net metering credits allocated to the seller to buyer from.
That's a great question. So that is what, our attorney's on the phone too, Steve, jump in if I am explaining this incorrectly. But so it's actually Exhibit A. The section six that you are referring to is, so we've already gone through and measured with verification from National Grid, your total consumption. So the amount that you're responsible for purchasing from us is listed in Exhibit A. And that number, 5.7 million, is 80% of your total consumption from National Grid. So you're responsible for purchasing the credits that you sign up for, but we've taken the time to ensure that you're not signing up for more than you need.
Well, I don't have any other questions. The only thing I want to leave off with this is that I think there's still a lot to discuss. I would like to see that Susan Baldwin report that the PUC has, you know, ordered. And you know where to get that Baldwin report, it would be through an NAPA request, I already found that out. We just recently heard of Attorney Christian being hired by the city on our behalf, as recently as maybe a day or two. I know myself, and I can't speak for any other council person, but these sections of this contract, I would like to open up a dialogue with the attorney of Christian to have some questions answered, questions answered and so on. There's some communication via email or phone call until I'm satisfied moving forward with this. And I'm only going based on what other municipalities have suffered and what some of them are currently suffering at the moment with litigation. And I don't want us to open ourselves up for more litigation that we already have endured and already know what we will in the future with other issues and circumstances, so.
One quick question, I know earlier someone mentioned that this might include the school department. My understanding is though, as of now, it does not, that this is just city municipal side? I don't know if anyone can corroborate that, but my understanding today was that the school department as of now is not part of this.
I believe that's correct. Council President, the mayor would like to contribute to the conversation.
Please.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. I want to thank Mr. Capizio and Hannah for speaking on this issue. But especially Mr. Capizio, just to inform the council, when Mike Marcelo, Solicitor Marcelo and I sat down with Green Energy numerous times, with our finance team and everybody, this is going on for quite some time now, so it's been over a year of work. We were trying to make sure we put protections in this contract because I have the same concerns that Councilman Murato mentioned about putting in a long contract without knowing for certain what we're going to get. I know Councilwoman's been a champion on this issue for quite some time, even before I got elected. So this is something that came out to a bid in the prior council, which, you know, we took the ball, we ran with it. The issues that are being brought up by Councilman Murato have to do with litigation regarding to zoning ordinances and things that had nothing to do with the net metering that we're talking about here today. We are not the first entity to enter into this net metering, it works. Other entities have entered into it and they see substantial savings. This would save us approximately $250,000 a year. In these very difficult financial times with all the uncertainty that we're facing, I'm trying to find any way to save money for the residents of East Providence. So I thank Mr. Capizio for putting together a very good contract. And I think Mr. Capizio will be happy to speak to all of the council people individually or two at a time to inform you on any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, just to expand upon what you're saying, Mayor, we're looking at a technical contract that we have here that even our city solicitor has some troubles digesting. And I say that in a way that this isn't your expertise. However, I mean, I presented with this contract on a Friday evening, very difficult to understand. I'm being told at that time, the latter part of last week, that the city has hired an attorney. And now we're having that dialogue as it comes time to a vote, to have any questions for the attorney, which I don't think in a matter of 15, 20 minutes that anybody's going to be able to explain this. The synopsis is well put, as both Hannah and Chris put it, but there's more to this. There's Exhibit A, B, C, if I'm not mistaken, I had some questions when I started reading this, as I said early on. But these questions aren't going to be answered this evening. There's, you know, the Article Four, purchase of a sale net agreement. I mean, the language that is in here is extremely busy. And that goes to what the Councilman Murato had talked about, the interest of 100% net metering credits allocated by the seller to the buyer. In addition to that, there's another portion here where I was reading over Exhibit A, or and/or, except, section 4.2 allocations. Exhibit B, seller anticipates that the net metering credits received by the buyer for a particular month will be reflected in the buyer's statement from EDC as a monetary credit amount and not as electricity quantity. And that such credit will be reflected on the buyer's monthly invoicing according to the EDC's billing cycle, and it just goes on about that. I mean, this kind of language in a contract is extremely complicated for me to understand. This isn't, I just don't understand, to be quite honest with you, to vote on something with this kind of language in a contract, 35 pages, extremely technical. And I just don't feel comfortable voting on something that I have absolutely no idea what I'm truly, what I'm truly voting on. So that, I mean, I think that if the administration was involved with talks with all the parties at some point for at least a year, I would have thought that at some point in time early on, this would have been introduced to the council to give us a heads up, to let us review, maybe even perhaps have a workshop or something to the nature that we can understand this more better going into, you know, giving it to us on a Friday evening and voting on it on a Tuesday with these technical terms. I just feel a little uncomfortable with that, to be quite frank. I'm not, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, I don't think there's a rush to vote on it today, not that I'm aware of. Is there a deadline that needs to be met today? Council, Ms. Hannah or Christian Capizio?
It was on for a vote.
Right, right, so it's on for a vote and for discussion, like you're having a discussion now. But if you feel, and the rest of the council feels, that you need further discussion, we could set up a workshop for sometime next week, a Zoom meeting, it's easy enough to do, or some other type of meeting individually, or two people at a time, so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act. So whatever you'd like to do, Council President, we're here to help you with that. We're not, we're not trying to rush something down your vote, anything like that, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for that.
May I?
But Councilman Kahoon, please take the floor.
I do do contracts for a living, right? And certainly, that expertise does not give me expertise into the purchase of every available product or sale, or service, rather. And I did send a number of questions to Mr. Capizio, who shared with me a number of responses, which in turn have generated other questions, which I've not yet been able to communicate. And I could go chapter and verse through those tonight, but it sounds as though we're heading toward either a dedicated meeting or something just on this topic. I think that might be warranted. There were some things said tonight that I'm not 100% sure that the contract really captures in that way. I am not sure that the way that the term is written communicates that, you know, if the West Greenwich facility doesn't come up to the commercial operational date, that we can get out of the contract. I'm not sure that the contract communicates that. I'm not sure that the contract communicates any specific term, and I've communicated these concerns. Another one, you know, Hannah, that you brought up with regard to, you know, the buyer's allocation. Well, there's unilateral provision in there that allows Green to change that allocation from, you know, the buyer's allocation of 5.7 megawatts to 17.86% of the Newsnec facilities' production. And again, that's without the city's say. And again, that's without the city's say. And I understand that there's probably reasons to do that, and they may be very good reasons. But I'm not comfortable with them. So I have a host of questions like that. For me to vote yes, and I, I put my name on the resolution because I have been involved in the talks. I do support this idea in principle. I do think it will ultimately be a good thing for the city if we can get it right. But I do want to make sure we get it right from a contractual standpoint. The very fact, as Mr. Morado pointed out, that we had to go outside to Mr. Capizo to help us negotiate through this makes me wonder whether we have the expertise on the city side to administer a type of contract like this. Will there be additional expenses to make sure that we're seeing the type of return that we, we expected? Will there be the type of expertise that we need in place to negotiate through disputes so that we don't get to court? These are the questions that I have on, on the whole, and I would really like to see those ironed out in contractual language that we can all feel good about.
Also, I, I, I say, I couldn't agree with you more. I saw the questions that you had. They were very in-depth and very, very thoughtful. So whatever, whatever it is that the council wants to do, we, we're here to accommodate.
Oh, I, I do echo the same understanding that the council president has. I too was surprised, having been somebody who's been involved in this for the past three years and had championed it in the previous council. I do have backgrounds, but again, having seen the contract for the first time, like everybody else on a Friday, it did come as a surprise. Didn't know this was coming down the pike for a council meeting. So it was more council president to put this on to have the discussion. So at least we have that information in front of us. We could openly discuss what our thoughts were, what our concerns were. And I think then it gave the administration an idea of what other questions that they could prepare for and then have individual conversations to answer some of those questions with the rest of the council. So I am, I'm, I think it's prudent to, you know, move this to a later date and continue it so that each council member can answer, have get questions, answers with either a party, either the city's hired attorney and or Hannah or any of their representation. I'm perfectly comfortable with doing that because I think it's prudent for all of us.
So Mr. Solicitor, would that be put on as a motion for future of to table as a discussion in the future and in their future?
Yes, I guess it would be. So it would be motion tabled, but my only suggestion is, is that if, I just want some guidance. I think because of the questions and I think that everyone would benefit from it. My suggestion is that you do have a workshop. We can invite Christian in and we can invite the green in. But it should be a workshop, just don't dedicate to this issue. So everyone can ask the questions, whether we do it Zoom or in person, that's up to you, but we should probably, you know, I, I would think that we want to do that sooner than later. Again, you, you know, again, we want to, as open and transparent as possible. It is a very complicated document. I agree. It's why I had to hire outside council to do so. Help me on it. So that's fine. But yes.
I, I just wanted to know if there was a, do we have to make a, because it is on here for a vote, do we have to make a motion for table?
No, yes, you need to motion to make it table and then we'll, and I'll talk to you tomorrow about how you want to schedule a workshop or what, what the council wishes is.
Is there any way to get that Baldwin report?
I will call the PUC. I think the Baldwin report, it may not be applicable. I, I will get the report. Yes. I, I, my, my understanding of what that report is, it has to do with individual consumers who switch from National Grid and buy energy from another source. That's, that's, that's different from a net metering contract, but I will get that report for you.
I, it would just make me happy to know that there's nothing in there that will harm us. I'm not saying I'm against this, 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 you know, net metering. I just, as, my concerns is just to go into it cautiously and do our due diligence as we have with many other topics for the city. I just wanted to know, that's all.
I, I support that 100%. And, and again, if you recall, the first contract that was proposed way back when was a 40-year contract. And because of the uncertainty that we believe that we are in, in the market and the uncertainty of some of these projects, we thought it would be better to get a shorter term contract. So again, we will, I will get that report for you and I'll, I'll talk to the council president tomorrow to schedule whatever he, you, the council wishes as far as their workshop or whatnot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to table and continue this for a later date.
So we have a motion on the floor right now from Councilwoman Souza to table this for a later date, seconded by Councilman Morado. We'll call vote, please, uh, excuse me.
May I just ask one question? Do we want to set a date certain? I, I know we've been looking at this for a long time. And I do understand that there's lots of outstanding questions. But perhaps if we could dedicate a meeting to this, perhaps even if it was an open meeting in the terms of, of a workshop. You know, and then we could follow that up with a decision in a subsequent meeting. Maybe that would give us the opportunity to do all of those things, answer all those questions that we need to, however long that takes, and then move on with either a yes or no. What does the council think? And I don't mean to jump on your motion.
No, no, I think that's great. I think I would prefer for us to schedule something tonight only because I know in this field, as any company prepares and sets up and goes through the process. There are other municipalities that also are looking to enter into contracts. So the problem that we've had in the past is, you know, we've had a potential project site available and then we haven't acted upon it. And then, so then it was put into another contract with another municipality. And then we have to sit around and wait for them to come up with another site and go through all of that zoning and planning and, and it's, it's a very long and cumbersome process that the company has to go through. And a lot of investment on their part, right? We're not paying for any of that stuff. That's the investment of the company. So I think it's prudent if we were really as a city on board with having that metering and getting those savings, then we would want to be able to try to save this West Greenwich property for our city. And doing so, we'd have to make some quick moves to schedule these workshops. So I'd entertain a workshop dates right now with my fellow council members.
Council President, I believe Hannah Marini has a question. She's raised her hand. Hannah, you have the ability to speak. You're not muted.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt. I, Councilwoman Souza actually just echoed about, I'm about to echo what she said. I just wanted to reiterate that these, this is an extremely unique opportunity. You will not find another example of a short-term contract such as this in the state of Rhode Island. And it's because we, we own and operate our projects ourselves. We don't, we don't turn around and sell them. So we don't necessarily, in all instances, have to have a long-term contract in place. That being said, long-term contracts are much, they're much more sound for us as a company. And they match the lifespan of the asset. So this is truly, this is truly a, a short window on this opportunity because we are looking for longer-term contracts if possible. So I would, I would encourage the council to set a workshop date relatively soon. We are 100% flexible and will be, will be present and participatory in any way that we can.
But in, in addition to you being available, we want to make sure all the parties are available as well, such as you know, Mr. Capizio, who's, who's representing the city. So is, is that something we want to do at this point in time to schedule a date at this time?
Council President, since you're on, in attendance.
Okay, so let's, let's come up with a date.
Would we, is a week sufficient? Or are we looking for two weeks?
Well, if, if, if the solicitor does a records request from the PUC for that Susan Baldwin report, I believe what the public records, what is it, 10 days, Madam Clerk, at least? Or Mrs. Solicitor?
I, I, I'll, I'll, 10 business days. I will try to get the report quicker than that, but I'll, I'll, I'll make an inquiry tomorrow from the PUC directly. It's cool. Councilman, if you just emailed me what you have on that report, it perhaps, I, I, yeah, that'd be great. Give me the name of the report and I'll try to get it quicker, quicker than that.
Well, the Susan Baldwin report.
What, what do we have as a requirement on the docket for two weeks from now? Is there anything that we must complete two weeks from now?
Weeks from now, today, we would have a council meeting.
Yeah.
That's the only thing we, well, as far as the council, I wouldn't say personally, because other people might have other things on their con, on their calendar, but let me see, two weeks from now is the 16th.
Right.
Okay, so we're looking at that week, the week of the 15th?
Yes.
Does that?
I, I mean, I'm asking what we even have on the docket right now for the 16th. Are, are there critical actions that need to be completed at the, on the 16th, or can we commit this meeting, that meeting to this topic?
Well, the, what we'll have on the docket is second passage for any ordinances that pass tonight. Number one, and number two, anything that comes up between now and then that may be of concern of a constituent or otherwise. I see where you're going. You know, that if we can reduce the amount of, you know, yeah, that we put on a docket, then we can just go two weeks from today. So I would say, I mean, I, I'm all for that. The only thing that will be on there is passage for any second, anything that requires second passage. And I don't think, I don't have anything, at least at this point in time, pressing to go on the docket that I see, at least for now. And it needs to be on there, could possibly wait, but yeah, I, I mean, I'm all for that if everybody else is game for it. That we just, just make sure next council meeting, on the 16th, just make sure that we don't load up the count, don't, we don't load up the docket.
Council President, as of right now, just to give an idea of what that might look like, there are five ordinances for first passage. So for the 16th, you would have five public hearings that would be coming up. Depending if.
First passage or second, for first passage or second passage?
For first passage. There are five ordinances for first passage tonight. And if they do all pass, they will all have public hearings for the March, for the June 16th meeting.
Council President, if I can expand on that, these ordinances that are for first passage and then subsequent second passages are, that are for public hearing are streets and vehicles. So street signs, signs, one ways, relatively move kind of smoothly through because they're obviously something that's been vetted out. Constituents have already, you know, reached out to us and asked whether, you know, if it can be done, if they've gone concerned. So I think they're, they're not encumber some ordinances that would be for second passage. So I think even if we did add them, if the sponsors wanted to, they would move along fairly quickly.
Just as every, just as long as everyone understands, you know, it is a public, it will be a public comment meeting. So therefore the public will have the right to join in. We don't know how long that will take. I don't mind it at all. I think it's a great idea that we go and proceed on the 16th for the next meeting. But again, just keep in mind, if those are the only things that we're going to have on a docket along with this, it's perfectly fine. But between now and then, constituents may have some concerns that need to be addressed and somebody might put on the docket. Just keep that in mind.
Council President, you also have your Dog Park ordinance that would be second passage.
So there's six ordinances.
It, it's included in the five.
Oh, okay.
Council President, do we, do we know, I can ask Solicitor Marcello or maybe the mayor, if he's still on, are we getting closer to meeting back in city chambers, city council chambers? I know now the number is 15 people. Has there been any guidelines or discussion or can we assume that we've got at least another meeting or two with Zoom?
So Councilman, I, I can answer that, not to exclude you, Mr. Solicitor. I've had this conversation with the city solicitor and the city clerk about going forward. I wanted to have this discussion in executive session about how we want to proceed as a council throughout the summer. And in addition to that, with regard or what respect to meetings for workshops for the capital, capital improvement budget and the budget as a whole. It's, we had the discussion, because it wasn't on a docket, I couldn't bring it up this evening, but I could talk to you off, off record about, you know, my thoughts that I shared with them and anybody else on an individual basis. Because I wanted this to be inclusive, that we make this decision as a group as to what direction we're going to head in as far as, you know, continuing with Zoom meetings from this point throughout the, throughout the summer.
As far as this workshop, I like the idea of the 16th. I mean, tomorrow's going to be Wednesday. So you got three days.
Okay.
Then Monday, and then, you know, we, we meet, I don't know if we'll have all the information. I'm flexible. I'll go either way. I'll go the next Tuesday.
Me too. I'm flexible.
That's, that's fine.
So we all, do we want to put it on the books right now for the 16th? Does that sound appropriate for everyone?
I, I would.
I say the first thing we do is have all the ordinances, make them on first, and then we just, you know, kick it from there.
I'll have an issue with that.
I move to place this, to table, continue this item for the June 16th docket.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you just make sure and confirm that this is on a docket for the 16th of June?
Of course, Council President. A more formal motion for a vote. I move to this docket item, resolution authorizing the mayor into entering into a net metering contract, credit sales agreement with Green Development LLC to June 16th regularly scheduled council meeting for further discussion and possible vote if we decide to at that time.
Mr. Capizo, would that fit your schedule?
Yes, that, that works for me.
Okay, we will be starting the meeting 6 o'clock. I say what we do is go right into the meeting at 6 o'clock. And we'll have executive session immediately following, if that's okay. All right, we got a thumbs up for everybody. Now, we do have a motion by the councilwoman to table this meeting until the 16th of June.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Roderick. So maybe we have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. So we all see, we'll see you all on the 16th in two more weeks from today. Moving right along, any other ordinances or resolution that needs to be bumped up at this point in time? If not, we will proceed from where we left off, which is continued business on the new business. Excuse me, new business, which would be the mayor communication.
Oh, I will bring the mayor back on. One moment. Okay, Mayor, you're on.
I believe, I believe this was just down for communication, unless there's any questions that could be put, placed.
I'm sorry, this is the mayor communication letter I sent in. I apologize. I was on a phone call and I, I missed my cue. Yeah, I, I think the letter speaks for itself. I, I really want to commend Mr. DeRozio on his letter. I think I, I like the points that he pointed out, that you don't, during this type of pandemic that we're dealing with and communication being a very difficult thing sometimes. I know, we noticed today in today's meeting, a couple of times, people froze up and they had some difficulty communicating and hearing and, and it, technology is, is fickle sometimes, right? So I, I have to say that I do agree with what he had to, he, Mr. DeRozio had to say regarding making amendments to a charter. But I do like the fact that Councilman Morado is, is agreeable to having some type of a process put in place so that a charter commission could be impaneled and they can do a careful review of charters for changes. So I just wanted to say that. And while I, I don't know if I'm able to mention an executive order that I had, I had to issue today instituting a curfew for all of East Providence. Information came to us during this meeting that we may be a city that has people coming to it to create problems and riot. So we put a, a curfew today for 9:00 PM through executive order, just to let the council know. And I apologize for the late notice because we just did this while we were on this meeting.
Mayor, does that mean I can't go out for dinner after a meeting? Because I'm hungry.
No driving, no going out.
Can we go home? Oh, wait a minute. We're already there.
Okay. With that being said, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We're going to move right along. And that concludes the new business, according to at least what I have at this point in time, unless I miss something. If I did, please let me know. unless I missed something, if I did, please let me know. We've already gone over the petition for the zone change. We've already gone over the resolution authorizing the mayor into the contract extension for recycling. So that brings us right over to page four, number two, resolution recognizing the month of June as East Providence Pride Month and honoring members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, gender, queer, intersex, asexual, and any other LGBTQIA in the community. Councilwoman Souza?
Thank you, I appreciate that, Council President. So as some of you may or may not know, for the past three years, the City of East Providence has been, has acknowledged and honored in the month of June the LGBTQIA plus with an annual flag raising ceremony, typically after the Day of Portugal event that occurred. Having spoke with the Rhode Island Vice President of the organization and other municipalities, I hadn't initially, I wasn't able to locate in a, our city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, my original resolution for the first, which was three years ago, flag raising. So that is why this one's on the docket tonight, because I was unable to locate the original one or find it anywhere in our system. So I'm not sure if there was a filing issue that occurred. That being said, I will go forward and read the resolution and then give some more information. So whereas in June of nineteen sixty-nine, the Stonewall Rising that occurred in Greenwich Village, New York, served, city served as a catalyst for the gay liberation movement in the United States and worldwide and has been an anchor in the international recognition of June as Pride Month. And whereas the state of Rhode Island, which was founded on the principles of freedom and tolerance, has outlawed discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation since nineteen ninety-five and on the basis of gender identity or expression since two thousand and one. And whereas on August first, two thousand and thirteen, the state of Rhode Island became the thirteenth state in the country to enact marriage equality. Whereas in two thousand and seventeen, both the Chamber of Rhode Island General Assembly unanimously passed a bill banning conversion therapy on mirror minors. And whereas in two thousand and nineteen, the Rhode Island General Assembly passed a bill enabling veterans who received less than honorable discharge based solely on sexual orientation to receive veteran benefits as if their discharge had been characterized as an honorable. And whereas pride is a commemoration of the struggle and perseverance of the LGBTQIA plus community and the obstacles that they have overcome. And it is a celebration of life resiliency within the community. Whereas the City of East Providence Council seeks to affirm that our city recognizes values and maintains an inclusive environment with members of the LGBTQIA plus community, their families and the families of the composites, whether they call East Providence their home, are visiting or in other communities, and cultivate East Providence's reputation as a welcoming and safe place for the members of the LGBTQIA plus community and their families. Whereas expressions of the community, solidarity and celebration promote further efforts towards a full legal, social and cultural equality for the members of the LGBTQIA plus community within East Providence throughout Rhode Island and beyond. And whereas the City of East Providence, I mean, I'm sorry, whereas the City of Providence, the City of Cranston, the Town of Barrington, and the City of Wunsaket and the City of Newport have passed similar resolutions to this and have chosen to recognize June as Pride Month within their municipalities, let it now be resolved that the City Council of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, as followed. The City of East, the East Providence City Council officially designates the month of June annually as Pride Month and will recognize such designations of an annual flag raising, pride flag, to be provided by Rhode Island Pride on the flagpole at City Hall during the month of June. The City Council respectfully requests that the mayor to accommodate pride flag raising ceremonies held annually during the month of June two thousand and twenty on the eve of June fifth and in sequential years on one evening during the first week of June, organized by and in collaboration with volunteers from the local LGBTQIA plus community, all municipal and state elected officials who identify as part of the LGBTQIA plus community and whose jurisdictions include East Providence and Rhode Island Pride. The flag raising ceremony is to be conducted in person by as few individuals as possible in a social distancing manner and streamed virtually due to the ongoing COVID pandemic. And that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the, to the City of East Providence State Senators, State Representatives and the General Assembly, all city and towns in the state of Rhode Island, the Speaker of the House, the Senate President of Rhode Island General Assembly, the Governor of the State of Rhode Island, East Providence's Senators and Representatives in Congress, and the Rhode Island Pride Organization. So just, there will be on passage of approval of this resolution on Friday, June fifth at five o'clock, there will be a ceremony with celebrating Pride Month in a flag raising will take place with a small speaking agenda. Again, there will be, and that's why it's in this resolution, given the current pandemic, it will be virtually televised through social media for the rest of the public to see. They will be limited attendance due to the pandemic. But in a normal, when we ever we get there year, it will be open again to the community as such. So I just wanted to acknowledge again that, so it looks like they're changing the date to June fifteenth because of all the ongoing riots that have been taking place throughout the cities in Rhode Island. So June fifteenth is the new date for the event, just as an update. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any questions from the council at this point in time? Councilwoman, would you like to form that into a motion?
Yes, please. I'd like to motion to approve the resolution recognizing the month of June as East Providence Pride Month honoring the LGBTQIA plus community.
Anyone like to second that motion?
Second that.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza dedicating this month for Pride Month, seconded by Councilman Morado.
Could I, Council President, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, if I, do we just change the date from the fifth to the fifteenth? Or is it already in the resolution?
Nope, I just changed it. So the resolution said the fifth pertaining to this year and then any subsequent years, the first week of the month. But for to this year's celebration, because of the riots that have been taking place down in Providence and subsequent municipalities, we're changing the flag raising this year to June fifth.
All right, so we're amending the resolution that's been submitted, correct?
Correct.
All right, so can we just make that amendment, Council President? So that's, I believe that would be a motion to amend the resolution to reflect the flag dating date is June fifteenth. That would be the first amendment, and then we have to approve the resolution as amendment.
Okay.
Motion to amend the first, the present resolution to reflect the change in date of June fifth.
Again, I'm having technical difficulty again. I can't hear, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you're back now. I just have a brief moment of where I couldn't hear. I heard your motion, Councilwoman, so we have, we do have a caution, we do have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second. Second.
Vocal.
I'm sorry, is that you, Councilman Morado?
Yes.
I have a bad connection, I apologize again. Okay, real call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President, Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. I just want to go back real quick, if we can, reports of other cities and officials. Early on, I had asked to request if anyone from the police department was here to talk about Captain Floyd Gardner regarding a supplemental funding grant. Is anyone on at this point in time from the police department, Mr. Solicitor?
Sorry, before we go to that, can we just now have a passage of the resolution as amended?
I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, I can't, I can't hear you too good, you're coming in and out.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Second.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor, if you, we have a motion on the floor, amend the resolution by Councilwoman Souza, I think it's seconded by Councilman Morado.
Myself or Councilman Cahoon?
I second it.
Okay, real call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. And again, I just wanted to, real quickly before we proceed, anyone from the police department or is Captain Floyd Gardner on to talk about the Corona Emergency Fund? Okay, no, all right, that proceeds, brings us right over to page four, number two. Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, we just completed that one.
We should be on page five, number four, Council President.
Sorry.
Okay. Number four is a resolution in support of proposed legislation allowing the Heritage Harbor Foundation permanent exemption from property taxation, sponsored by Council President Brito and Councilman Cahoon.
Yep, Madam Clerk, you're breaking up. I heard you read very briefly the resolution.
Was having, was anybody having a problem hearing me?
The Council President's now frozen, I think, hold on. She's back.
Okay.
You're muted, Councilman.
Madam Clerk, we are on resolution number four, did you read that off already?
Yes, that was the resolution in support of proposed legislation allowing, yep.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
Just my explanation to the members of the council, as you know, we have an executive session regarding a post settlement over a tax dispute, this is one step in that process. So we're now asking the General Assembly to pass legislation that would allow this Heritage Harbor to be remain tax exempt. If it passes, it'll solidify our settlement agreement, but we need this before they can go forward with a state statute amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. As you all know.
I make a motion to, as he cut off.
He's frozen, let's hold on.
Okay.
Hello?
Go ahead.
You froze, go again.
Yeah, I know, I'm just continues to have, continue to have a problem.
Don't be cold in your studio there. Council President, you're like a windshield wiper, keep intermittent.
Yeah, I know.
So are you asking for a motion?
Go ahead, Council Vice President, can I take a motion ahead?
Yeah, I would help out here and I think we're at the point where entertaining a motion on this, this time. Is there one on the floor?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Morado, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Madam Clerk, could we call a roll?
Yes, Council Vice President, Council, Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
I'm going to abstain.
And Council President Brito.
Council President, if you hear me, can you give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the motion to approve?
He's frozen.
Well, we have, I believe, three.
Hold on, he's still here, hold on a second.
Hello?
We hear you now.
Hi, Council President.
In an event that I take, in an event that I go off again, Councilman Roderick, just, can you just take it from there? Because I can't hear, my whole audio and visual shuts down. I don't know if this has anything to do with the curfew that the mayor just issued in the city or what the problem is, but.
It is almost nine P M.
I'm not having any luck. All right, so we're going to move right along, we've done.
We just need your vote, we just need your vote, Councilman, on the last, the issue, on the settlement proposal. He's frozen again.
Okay. That's okay. Council President Brito, we just need your vote for yea, I or nay for the resolution.
For.
Number four.
Yes.
And you can thumbs up or thumbs down. All right.
How about this, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, you're good.
All right, so we're going to move right along to number six, resolution, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
That's okay. Resolution proposing an amendment to this, to the charter, the city charter regarding charter commissions, discussion only, no vote, sponsored by Councilman Morado and Councilwoman Souza.
So I don't want to prolong this or have a, you know, hours debate on this. Everyone knows the history and how we got to this point. You know, I had to stay, I had to take a step back from a couple of council meetings ago where I looked at the issues as, and what I was trying to accomplish and what we at different points as a council have discussed and also tried to accomplish. And what I had to do is really look at this, the issue and look at the bigger picture, right? So, and looking at the bigger picture, I had to look at it from a view of what's best for the city moving forward. It's not about me, it's not about the council, it shouldn't be about the administration, it should be about what's best for the city, right? So I started looking into other municipalities and did charters. And what I have found is that most of them have a mechanism in their charters which require, which triggers a charter review commission every so often. Some are, I believe, five years, six years, eight years, ten years, they're pretty much all over the place. So I think the best way to go forward with this is to have a resolution, have, I'm sorry, a provision in our charter that would trigger that. My first model I looked, that I looked at was after the Tiberian model. And there's, they have a seven member board that's all elected. The top seven vote getters are members of the commission, they serve for a year, and the top vote getter out of the seven serves as the chair. So I'm thinking, okay, well, that's a, that's, to me, that's a fair process or one that is not. Yeah, there can be some political influences, but if average Joe citizen wants to get on this board and they can actually have an opportunity, opportunity to do so, without having any political affiliations and so on. So then I also looked at the mayor's letter that he sent to the council. And I started thinking, you know, you know, I did like some of the concepts of having council appointment, having a mayor appointment and so on. And what I have come up with is, I think, is an equal, a happy medium, right? So what I'm proposing, it's that we have a nine member board, five of which are elected, one from each ward, one at large. And they would be elected as if we, you know, as a council member is elected, right? They have to still register with the Board of Elections. I mean, I'm not saying that they have to raise funds and put word signs, but they have to go through those steps. And the reason why I like that, it's because it's kind of a vetting process. If someone's really interested in joining this board, they're going to take those extra steps as we did to get on the council, right? As, as the school committee does, to get on the school committee and so on. So, and with that, so that gives the opportunity for the average Joe citizen to be a member of this board. You know, they don't have to have political ties and, you know, that type of stuff. I'm not saying that's how, you know, our previous charter commission was picked, but you know, that, that kind of eliminates that in a way. But I also like the, the two council appointments, right? And that would be appointed by the council and by majority vote. And that would be appointed by the council and by majority vote. And I also do like the two mayor appointments, right? So that would make up the nine member board. I did put on this draft resolution to have the city council pick the chairperson. But, you know, I'm not opposed to having the committee themselves pick their own chairperson. I, I'm open to that, you know? And, you know, to, to address Mr. DeRogio's concerns that, you know, this is a with having these discussions during, during this pandemic and such, I understand that and I get that. But I'm also, I also don't want to miss that, miss that deadline, miss that, I think this is something that should be put into this ballot coming up in November. And that, and if it was to pass by the voters, this process wouldn't start until 2022. So this process wouldn't even benefit this council at the moment. It would benefit the next council and the next administration. And those elected and selected people for that new charter, they would be in, the term would be one year, I'm also open to extending that if the council feels that one year would be enough for future councils. And then whatever is decided, whatever is vetted, whatever is voted on by that council, I put on the, a subsequent election, whether it be federal or state or local, then those questions we put to the voters again. So the process would be completely vetted, completely, you know, discussed. And, you know, I, so my goal tonight is to hear back from my council or fellow council members as to what they like about this, what they don't, how can we tweak this? And my goal would be to put this on for a vote on the July 7th meeting, which by then I hope that we at least had one, you know, live meeting and/or the July 7th meeting be a live meeting. But the July 7th meeting is the absolute deadline. There would be no more meetings after that unless we had a special meeting just for this, and I don't think the council will be willing to do that. But July 7th would be the absolute, we would have, in order to meet the August 5th deadline of sending this to the Secretary of State. So with that, I open, I open, you know, this discussion up to the rest of the council members.
So thank you for that. Also, as a cosponsor, this was ironically, I, not knowing that Councilman Morado was doing his research on one end, I was subsequently speaking and looking into it on my side, having had multiple discussions at council meetings where we found that they were questions that we were interested in putting on the ballot. And then the discussion of maybe it should be vetted out into a longer process to have more transparency. And I think the general public feeling more comfortable, and maybe the administration. I also had spoken to and researched other municipalities, spoke to people who sat on those that were elected, administrations and how they felt about it. And I think the, the information that I came up with and then the one that Mr. Councilman Morado came up with, I think blended well into what we have present tonight and for the public and the council members. Now, with that, I did not hear Mr. DeRogio's letter because I was not tuned in yet from work. But I'm sure he had great points, as he typically does. But we can't, you know, there's a lot of good things and bad, and we just have to coordinate it to what we feel is appropriate for our city in not one individual, but as a collective whole. And I think this one is a pretty good comprehensive where it meets halfway and ends. I like how administration, the mayor gets, you know, a say in it in terms of a pick, the council equally. The, the years, I think eight years is, every eight years is a good timeframe. It doesn't affect a specific election season, so, and it gives the vetting them time, it's not something that we're doing in the immediate. So it's not self-serving to the current council, which I know some people in the public may have thought when discussing these things that it was all self-seeking or it may potentially have been self-seeking, so it certainly isn't, and that's right in the language as evidenced by anybody who's seen it. So, you know, I think this was something that a lot of thought between multiple or few council members and other, clearly the mayor's office, so it's something that we know needs to be done. I think it's prudent for us to have in our charter, given the change of government. It is something that is done in all municipalities pretty much that have a mayor form of government. And the language is similar compared to the size of their, their cities, so that's my.
Okay, I've, I've heard from Mr. Brito, he's having difficulty again, he's going to try to phone in, in the meantime, he's asked me to help facilitate the meeting, so thank you, Councilwoman, other comments? Councilman Kahoon?
If I could just add, and I like the opinion of the council, so in this draft, it says, you know, the city council should choose the chairperson of the charter commission. I also had a, a resident reach out to me and say, you know, I think it would be best if the chairperson is chosen by the members themselves. And, and then, you know, I also heard, you read that, you read that letter from Mr. DeRogio, and I'm not opposed to that. I'd just like to, I'd just like to get the council feedback as to if we were to change that.
Oh, I, I would add something to that, and I think the good thing is, it's just discussion tonight. We have time to change this a bit. I like pretty much everything I've heard, I think it's a good, a good melding of administration and some of the council ideas. I can kind of live with how, however we pick the chair. My, my first preference is to do it like a jury. And that is let the body itself pick their chair, as was just mentioned. Sometimes, you know, you could be the top vote-getter but not necess, on an organization, but not necessarily have skills to chair a meeting, or you might not want to. So I think get a body seated, and just like a jury does in the jury room, they come back out and they say we had a discussion and we feel comfortable with this person being our chair. So I, I lean that way to let the charter commission itself pick its own chair that way. They can't say that we're trying to run the show, they can't say that administration's trying to run the, run the show, let the body itself. The other idea I'd like to suggest is that in order to show seriousness of intent that people running for this seat need to get maybe 25 signatures, just like we have to get 50, I had to get 100 at large or whatever it was, 200. We, we, we need to show that we're serious in running, otherwise you could have 200 people throw their name in and say, yeah, throw me on the ballot. I want to run, but they don't really want to do the work. So, again, it's not a game breaker for me, but in, in addition to the other qualifications like the Board of Elections and going through Secretary of State, whatever they have to do legally, why not make each person who wants to be on the charter commission get 25 certified voter signatures? That's not a lot, you could probably do that within your own family or street.
So to your point, I did look into that and, and I, I am not opposed to that at all. But I believe in speaking with Assistant Solicitor Dillon and the Board of Canvassing, I believe that's governed by you know, Secretary of State laws anyways, the Board of Election Law. So, I think that mechanism's already in there.
Okay.
The only time I might, that something, that type of mechanism is not there is for to be selected to a Democratic or Republican or whatever work committee.
Sure.
Work committee member. No requirement then would be an appointment. But this would be an elected position, you know? And as I said, that term of a year, you know, we could be flexible on that, we could put language in there where if needed to go beyond, if you, you know. I think a year is, is, is good. It's a good timing, they're not redoing the whole charter, they're just looking at particular issues that may pop up or, you know, arise during a, an eight-year period, but I'm open to that also, you know? I do like the, I do, I do like the charter picking their own, the chair as we pick our own for, you know, for our council. So I, I can have that changed if we're in agreement with that. But my goal is to put this on for a vote at the absolute deadline of July 7th. I can put it back on for the 16th if we want to have another discussion on it, just to touch up on, you know, some of these items that we're talking about tonight, and then put it on for July 7th for a vote. And as I mentioned, hopefully by then, we'll be in live session and this has been now enough that I think the public, you know, is well-educated on it. So that's where I'm trying to lean for tonight, tonight is to get that input from the rest of the council members.
I see the Council President has returned, so I'll turn the chair back. Council President, we just have had a general discussion, we know that there's no vote taken tonight, and I think everyone has had had their say, so at this point, that's where we stand.
Okay, well, please proceed at this point in time, because I, I don't want you to rehash the entire discussion.
So what I'd like to do is with that change of the selection, I'll let me ask the council, is everyone in agreement and satisfied with this resolution with those changes?
Sounds good to me, the change is being that the commission members would choose the chair themselves. And what was the other change?
And then it happened the last charter as well.
Right.
Yep, so, and then I'm, I'm open to that one-year term, if you want to extend that, or how do you want to proceed with that? Is, is one-year term enough to tweak charter amendments moving forward? I mean, they.
You're meaning that's, that's how long they would have to, to complete their charge?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would think a year should do it.
That is consistent with currently in this constitution, when our initial charter commission is formed, they have one year to do it.
And, and that, all of that was kept in mind when looking at this and looking at other municipalities. I mean, we have the ability to amend that, correct, Solicitor?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
I said that is, keeping in mind, that is what I've seen in other municipalities, but I mean, we have the ability to change that if we would like to, to extend that, but I, I think even that one year is consistent.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think, I, I'm really not sure if you can, because I think you can't go beyond what the constitution requires, even for for amendment, but it's, it's an interesting question, but you're right, most of them have one year from the date of election to come, after, after election to propose a, a change.
So with that, I, you know, this is just for discussion, I will move this for a vote for the July 7th meeting. So what the process for this would have to be posted? As with any, any other resolution, Mrs. Solicitor?
That's correct, Councilman Morado.
Okay, would it be safe to put this on, and I know we're trying to keep that July, June 7th docket, June 16th docket, very light, but would it be safer and more transparent to put this on? Or are we happy with putting it on for the July 7th vote?
Well, are we talking two passages? Or, or one, just, just the one? So the one passage, we might have some public comment that night, but that's okay, we can do it at one night, so. I think the 16th we should stay away from, we don't know how, how long, you know, there's other stuff is going to go. We've got five resolutions, the, the grid discussion. So I would think, let's, let's go for July 7th and try to keep that meeting thin outside of emergency stuff, because there may be some public comment, which I'm sure we all encourage. So maybe a councilman, if you could work on the wording changes with either Solicitor Connolly, if that's who you worked with, or Solicitor Marcello, and Clerk Burnett, if you can work on the changed language and then get that to us for the July 7th meeting.
Very well done, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to Council President and City Clerk now for the next item.
Thank you, Councilman Roderick, Madam Clerk?
The next item is introduction of ordinances. The first is an emergency ordinance for first and final passage, it's a temporary ordinance. And that is, an ordinance, hold on just a moment, an ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section 18-308, is on Greenwood Avenue in Rumford.
Again, I had explained, I had explained this earlier, so I'm not going to go into greater detail. However, I would say that although the ordinance is reading 15 minutes, it'd be a 15-minute curbside pickup, and these are for the local businesses that I expand upon early on in our conversation regarding this ordinance.
President, I would move approval, first pass.
Thank you for that, Mr. Councilman Roderick. So we have a motion on a full approval from Councilman Roderick.
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Souza, Madam Clerk, can we have a vote on this, please?
Yes, Council President.
Before we, I'm sorry, before we vote, just because this is an emergency ordinance, the charter requires four affirmative votes to passage.
Good thing nobody's accent.
Don't freeze up, Mr. President.
Well, you know what to do if I do.
Well, call on him first.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Council President Brito.
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Thank you, council members. Next item, please.
The next item is ordinances for first passage. The first one is an ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section 18-307. The location is Greenwood Avenue on the south side, sponsored by Council President Brito.
Okay, this goes hand in hand with the previous ordinance, emergency orders that I just passed, it's removal of the no parking sign. This has been approved by the fire department prior to my discussion and my coming up with this. It was a coincidence that I just so happened to bring this up to Mr. Fattaro, Mark Fattaro, that is, and he has said the fire department was looking to create this space by eliminating the no parking. So those businesses directly across the street that are affected by the very limited parking that they have, there is no interference whatsoever with the fire trucks coming in and out and to and from on Greenwood Avenue and in and out of the station as well. So with that being said, it was a discussion long before I apparently had brought this to the attention to those. So I'm, I'm looking for a passage, first passage, that is, to eliminate the parking sign or no parking sign, I should say, on the south side of Greenwood Avenue, which is directly alongside the fire department.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Kahoon, anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second motion by Councilwoman Souza, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, if you can hear me, I'm freezing up, and I got another one on here too. Did you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, the next ordinance is. An ordinance and amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section 18-269. The location is Westwood Avenue and Hope Street, sponsored by Council President Brito.
Frozen. Looks like he's frozen again, so I, I think this goes in line with his other ordinance requests, so it's one, two, three in a row, been enough discussion, I think. Is, is there any discussion or entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, first pass.
Motion made by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Kahoon. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Yes, Council Vice President. Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Council, Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And, uh, Solicitor Marcello, should we wait for Council President Brito?
We, we, we can go back to let him vote when he comes back in, but here he is. You're muted.
You're on mute.
Council President.
I'm sorry. Uh, how's that? All right. Just, I'll be real quick. I'm looking at it.
We actually have, uh, we actually have four votes and approval. So it's just up to you now to vote.
All right. Aye.
And discuss.
Okay.
Need a vote for you and Council President Brito.
Uh, what I'm going to do is I'm, I'm going to, at this point in time, can, can I make a, a brief statement? I'm frozen.
No, you, we can hear you. No, we can't.
Rodrick.
Council President, we just need your vote on item number two, up or down.
I, I.
Thank you.
Very good. You're good.
Listen, uh, uh, if, if, if you all don't mind, oh, go ahead, go ahead, proceed.
Okay. The next ordinance is an ordinance, an amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled vehicles and traffic. This is section 18 dash 247. The location is Rice Avenue is a one-way modification sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
The picture I showed last time, putting a, a, a do not enter at the end of the road. So people can't turn onto Puckett Avenue from Rice Avenue, but they can go onto Rice Avenue from, uh, Dover up to that point, which they currently cannot do.
Take a motion to approve.
Second. Council President, are you with us? Okay.
Um, I can barely hear you, but I'm in.
Okay. We do have a, a motion and a second. Uh, did you call the roll, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council Vice President. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, who is the motion, who made the motion to second? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Uh, the second was Councilman Murato. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I had.
Yes, uh, Councilman Cahoon made the motion.
Thank you.
No, I did.
Oh, Councilwoman Souza did. Councilwoman Souza did.
Sorry, sorry, sorry about that.
Did we, uh, did we miss one? The Westwood, uh, Hope Street?
No, we did that one.
Okay. That's one that we already did, Councilman Murato. No, right, right before this one, Councilman Murato.
Yep. Okay. Bob keeps on coming back. Well, you might, let's do the vehicles and traffic, number five, and we'll come back for the dog ordinance one after the dog park.
So this is page seven, item number five, if you're following along. It's an ordinance, an amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled vehicles and traffic, section 18 dash 269, Vincent Avenue of Brown Street, sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
Stop sign, two ways along Vincent Avenue going, uh, east and west. Requested by, uh, multiple residents who live at that intersection.
Any discussion or motion at this point?
Being someone who's ward, um, kind of butts that, I think that's a great idea. So I, uh, very familiar with that area and travel it daily. Yes, I agree. That's a good idea. Thank you for, um, putting that on the docket, Councilman Cahoon.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito, not present.
Absent, not present. Just mark him not present.
Thank you.
Next item.
If you want to go back to number four, do you want to wait till he gets in? That's because it's his ordinance.
Yeah. Why don't we wait and see if he can get back in and we'll go to the next.
All right. So we're going to go for second passage now. Come, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Thank you, Solicitor Marcello. The first ordinance for second passage in public hearing. It's an ordinance, an amendment of chapter 18 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled vehicles and traffic, section 18 dash 307, no parking, Purchase Street and Orchard Street, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
I know it's, uh, open for public comment, so I don't really have anything more to add. The ordinance really speaks for itself. These are problematic areas, um, in this neighborhood where parking up to and, um, approaching the side, uh, stop sign hinders, uh, vehicles from taking the turn onto that, um, street. And also, uh, is an issue with emergency vehicles also making those turns. So I open it up for, you know.
Madam Clerk, I see there are 10 attendees. Is there anyone with their hand raised or?
No, public, public comment is definitely open. If anybody would like to speak, you just go ahead and raise your hand.
Okay. Hearing, hearing none.
Just, can we just confirm for the record about Council Vice President, we received no written public comment, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. One more time, is there anyone like to publicly comment on, on this, uh, ordinance? This is a public hearing. We've received no written comments, uh, hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, I think you should have to close public comment and then we can move forward.
Yeah, we have, we've had no more. So we'll, we'll officially close the public comment and entertain a motion.
Uh, I make motion for second passage, um, an ordinance, um, an amendment to chapter seven revised, um, for traffic, uh, vehicle and traffic.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Murato. We, uh, call a roll, please.
Yes, Council Vice President. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye.
Vote passes five zero. Uh, Council President Brito's returned. We can return back now to the, uh, uh, Councilman Brito's ordinance. Is that the dog ordinance?
Yes. Page seven, item four.
We'll turn the chair back to you, Councilman Brito, on page seven, item four.
Thank you. I'm on my phone now, so hopefully I shouldn't have no problems. I was able to get through on the phone, which I wasn't able to earlier. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to read the ordinance we-
Yes, Council-
So it's on the docket.
Yes. Uh, an ordinance, an amendment of chapter three of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled animals, section three dash 42 pertaining to dog parks in East Providence, sponsored by Council President Brito.
So this will reflect upon the dog ordinance in, uh, the, for the dog park that we had earlier, um, earlier on in the year. What this does is the intentions was early on to have a, uh, $6,000 money coming out of the capital camp, uh, capital budget, which we all approved. Uh, I would like to, uh, uh, resubmit, uh, that $6,000 that was allocated for the, uh, dog park, uh, back into the capital improvement budget. Uh, at this point in time, I don't see it necessary to spend additional money on a dog park. So I had to, uh, along with the city, had to come up with some rules and regulations with respect to the dog park. So this essentially spells out the rules and regulations that the dog would have to be, um, have the annual shots, have to be registered with the city. You would have to be a city, uh, resident to utilize the dog park. And this gives jurisdiction to the, uh, Department of Public Works Director Steve Kudus in conjunction with the, uh, Animal Control Officer, Officer Muggles, that they could periodically do spot checks on dogs that are in the dog park, dog park, check their tags and make sure they're legally licensed in the city of East Providence. Uh, I know at one time, I'm not even sure if, uh, Officer Muggles is still on. Um, Madam Clerk, you can let me know that. Uh, so if he wants to speak on a little bit about this, uh, that's fine. If not, I'll proceed faster. There will be fines, um, to this, uh, uh, ordinance that we have here. Why the fines are not, uh, labeled here on this, but, um.
We're using, Council President, we're using the same default fines for, uh, uh, for dog violations. So that's why they're not here. We didn't change that, which is using the default that's in this ordinance already.
Okay. All right. Very good. So essentially, uh, I'm just taking away, uh, I'm rigging on the, uh, $6,000 that we had allocated. I like to put that back into, uh, the capital budget and I like to proceed with an ordinance that has, that gives the animal control officer, uh, leverage to just periodically, police department to periodically spot check the dog park for those people that are utilizing it and make sure they're residents of the city of East Providence. And more importantly, their dogs are licensed, uh, here, uh, licensed and ha, up to date with their vaccination shots.
Uh, if I could ask, uh, Council President, before Officer Muggles was on, and maybe he could address it as well. Part of the language in here that I read talks about, uh, DPW or, or someone could designate any city park in quotes, um, or portion thereof. Now, my question is, would that include Little League fields? I, I think in most cities, they, you see signage where they definitely try to keep animals off formal Little League fields. I, I think we all know what could possibly happen there. I don't mind an open space area, but I, I don't, I don't know that I would love the idea if they could designate, especially during season. Now, obviously with the pandemic, the Little League is on hold. But I wouldn't want to see Pierce Stadium, let's say the football field or Little League fields be designated as, um, whether it be temporary or not, be designated as, uh, set for a dog park. I think that could cause, you know, that, that, that could be to the detriment of our beautiful parks in the city. I think you have other open areas that would be fine.
No, you're absolutely correct, Councilman. Uh, no, this does not pertain to that. What this pertains to, uh, for an example, uh, at one point in time, there were other councilmen, other council people during the last, uh, council who requested about having dog parks and, and the awards as well. So what this gives the opportunity that if one, two, three or four decides that they want to have one, for, you know, just all, uh, grassy plains, for an example, that we have an ordinance already in effect. It doesn't have to come in front of the council again. So this would designate certain areas of a designated park area, not in a ball field area, um, to have a, you know, enclosed in, uh, dog park. So if we need to be a little more specific on that, uh, I guess, you know, uh, Mr. Solicitor, we can, you know, be a little more specific on that. So it doesn't say city park.
Well, it says, uses the word any, says any city park.
The perk, uh, obviously there's going to be some, the, the reason why, when this was originally drafted, we actually had a specific park in mind. Um, but the council, uh, council president, uh, rightly indicated that we want to be able to open this up to any dog park within the city. And, uh, that may be, may become available in the future. So obviously if there's a dedicated Little League field, um, I don't, I wouldn't, technically, yes, the DPW director could designate that as a dog park, especially if it becomes out of, out of use. But if obviously it's an active field, so there's going to be some discretion here. Um, it would be impossible for us to list or exclude. So obviously, uh, that's why we kind of left it the way it is. Obviously, we would hope that, uh, DPW director would use good judgment and designate a park such as, uh, a dog park. Obviously, if they, if they did take Pierce Field and make it a dog park and the council did not want to do that, they could certainly amend the ordinance quickly and take it out and, and re-designate it. But it was just kind of, you know, there may be parks that are underutilized correctly right now. There may be parks that are not even in the making and that we just wanted to give the, the Department of Public Works discretion to make that designation without having to come before the council again. But again, the council could always reverse that, that decision.
It sounds reasonable, sounds fair.
This is to incorporate the county of the city as a whole.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we don't have dogs running all over the Pierce Stadium football field or the Little League fields. Um, it's tough enough to keep them up. Knowing that Steve Kudus used to be a Little League coach, I'm sure he will, won't do that.
Council President. Councilman, if I, if I may, this is, uh, Officer Muggles. Um, uh, there, there is an ordinance already in place that prohibits, uh, the dogs being on sports playing fields anyway, so they wouldn't be able to designate those specific areas as a, as a dog park. So.
Great.
Uh, I'm sorry, Officer Muggles, I didn't know you, uh, you were on.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just saw that I was allowed to, uh, unmute, so.
Had I known that, I would have just went to your, so you wouldn't have been sitting around listening to a little-
No, that's all right.
What's going on. So I hope you're home listening to this.
The curfew anyway. Where is he going to go?
Yeah, that's it, right?
Council President, Council President, uh, I, I think that you were distributed, the council was distributed some amendments that Officer Muggles, uh,
Yeah, I got that. I, I got that a little later. Can you read that? You have that there?
Yeah, sure. I, I, I have it. I have it in front of me and, and we can go through it, um, just so the record's clear. And if the council just, uh, so approves it, I'll, I'll let Officer Muggles speak to it, but I have it in front of me. So the first amendment, you know, that was a good one. Uh, and again, he reviewed this after we submitted it. So, you know, that's our, our, um, uh, we just defined what a dog park is and a dog park. So we're going to amend to add, we're going to amend section three dash one on the definitions. We're adding the term dog park. And dog park means any park, comma, or section of a park, comma, designated by the Director of Department of Public Works, comma, where the definition of quote unquote restraint is relaxed to mean when a dog is under verbal control of its owner, comma, and where dogs may be allowed to run freely without being leashed. So obviously we have a leash law in this, in the city of East Providence. And so this, uh, this definition helps us, um, relax that leash law requirement, uh, when you're in a dog park and defines what a dog park is. So that would be the first amendment, but I think we should probably take the amendments as a whole because they're all comprehensive. But that's, if everybody has any question on that, that's, that's the first amendment. And again, this amendment, these amendments were passed out to the council prior to this, to this meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor.
Will, do you need anybody to say anything on that? Will?
Uh, no. So the, uh, the, uh, those changes all kind of reflect what I was thinking, uh, once I saw what the, uh, the ordinance was. The only, uh, the only other thing I know that you were looking for, uh, uh, a permit to go along with it, and I, I spoke to that a little bit. And, and ultimately the, uh, I think the, the license system that we already have in place actually works pretty well. Uh, we have a, a program that we can use to reference those, uh, dog licenses so that we can, you know, make sure that if somebody is in violation of any of the rules or, uh, you know, ordinances that they, they could be, uh, you know, fined accordingly or given a hearing, you know, to decide whether they're, uh, eligible to, to, you know, go back into the, uh, dog parks or not.
So just so the council understands, so the other thing that we did, uh, so it's in order to be eligible to use the dog park, you obviously have a licensed, uh, dog. And that's, that license is what you, what allows you to get into the dog park. And Officer Muggles does have a, a, a provision of tracking that. So under section B, to make that clear, we're adding the word, uh, again, I'm going to, I'll read it to you and I'll tell you what we're adding. And I have this down, Miss Clerk, so we'll, we'll get this to you if it passes. So every resident of the city of East Providence who is the owner or keeper of a, and we put currently, we're adding the word currently, currently licensed dog, comma, pursuant to section three dash three five, uh, 35, comma, that's added, that's reflecting back towards the licensing, uh, provision shall be permitted to use any designated dog park. There's a, there's a period there, we're getting rid of that, provided that the resident obtains. Uh, we're striking the word under number one, an annual dog park permit. We're striking the word tag as, as originally proposed to be issued by the city clerk and, and no additional fee. Uh, and then we're striking under this, uh, number three. And then, uh, under section C, we're adding the language, uh, under C1, all dogs within the park must be collared, comma, with the, with city of East Providence dog license attached, comma, at all times. Uh, so we're adding that language. And then we're also saying that no, no dog previously adjudicated as dangerous, comma, we're adding the word aggressive, comma, or vicious shall be permitted within the park. So those are the, those are the one, two, three, four, five, six changes that we're trying to amend this underlying statute. Again, it's been distributed to you to, to show what those changes are. Really just as clarification and making sure that, uh, it fits in after Officer Muggles' review.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. So for those of you who have, uh, who are not, uh, talking right now, can you put, mute your phones so we don't pick up the background noise?
I'm sorry, it's probably mine.
Oh, okay. That's all right. But thank you.
So I just have a question, Council President and, and Mike. Um, so the version I have, I apologize. I, I didn't locate, uh, I didn't have the updated. So is, with these new amendments, will then that be first passage?
Yes.
Posted? Okay. So-
Yes, because, yes.
So we're not, we wouldn't necessarily take a vote necessarily on this tonight since it's not the, uh, we'd essentially be doing a, a first passage again at the next council meeting. Is that accurate?
No, no, no. You, you could, you could amend it. Now, that's why we did, that's why I distributed the amendment. So this is, this is, this will be first passage because you can amend that first passage. It's only, you can't amend it second passage.
No, I know you can't amend it at second passage. I was thinking, I didn't, I didn't get it for, um, I didn't get the electronic- I was saying, I didn't, I didn't get it for, I didn't get the electronical. I got mine dropped, I got a printed copy, so you must have done the addendum after I've received my copy of my, my packet.
I believe on Friday, we sent you a, an email showing the amendments that Officer Muggles suggested.
I'm not sure which email, I don't have access, I know the city, we did the emails for the citywide and I haven't had access to that email, that city designated council email, and I did not receive one to my current email that is used for the city. So I don't have the amendments personally, which it doesn't have to hinder this process. I'm just saying, this is the first time I'm hearing of the amendments. So anyways, yeah, we can move forward. I just have one question for, for whoever can answer, Council President or Mike. Now, when, to Council Vice President's point, so how would, or who would direct, I guess, this, the DPW director for dog parks throughout the, you know, depending on where there was a desire to have one? So would it be, you know, like you have mentioned in, you know, one that you, we had talked about previously in Rumford, so obviously, that's kind of on the, the, as a spot. Would it be something that we could discuss at a council meeting and say, hey, this is what I found in, you know, my ward, that people would like to have one and, you know, based on feedback, this is where they think generally they would like to have one? How would that kind of play out?
So I, I could tell you through my personal experience, initially, where we, where the dog park is located now is not the first choice. The first choice was off of New Road. There's a park right off of New Road, adjacent to Skate USA, there's a basketball court and just beyond that basketball court, we were looking at that particular area to set up a dog park. I went over, reviewed this last year, year and a half ago, perhaps a year and a half ago, with the Director of Public Works, Steve Kudus, Rob Walker and Mark Fattado at that point in time. However, the challenges were parking. It was either going to be on, on road, on the street parking or in addition to that, right in the parking lot next, that runs alongside the basketball courts at Skate USA. So I wasn't too sure whether or not Skate USA will provide us that parking, although I thought that was a great area. But then, when I reflected and started to really read into this, I saw that it was in a heavily residential area. And that's as time passed by, I walked my dog in periodically in Huntsville and I saw this banded area where it was already fenced in. So the fence that's there is existing, they just had to put a small entryway for the animals. But other than that, all it needed was cutting the grass and there was a couple of, there was a carriage, a cot that was in there, a tire and a piece of concrete pipe that was in there as well. And that's essentially all the city had to do is clear that up, a couple of debris that was in there, and I thought it would just be the ideal location because it's kind of away from residential. There's a buffer, roughly about a forty foot buffer between the neighbors of budding property from their backyard and there's all kind of vegetation in between that. So I just thought, I, my initial reaction was to contact DPW or, but more importantly, I went out and scouted out possible locations.
So a recommendation can come from anybody?
Yeah, oh yeah, like if you got a, if you see a specific area, just, you know, and just bring it to the attention of the administration. That's how I did it personally.
No further questions? Motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Clerk, you're on mute.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, I did speak. Can we just, we actually do this a two step process. So the amendments that we, I just read, can we just vote on those amendments?
Yes.
And then vote as, then, if we could just rephrase that motion, is that to amend it as indicated now, that would be the last motion. Now we're going to pass it as amended, first passage.
Motion to pass as amended from the previous motion, which was the motion to amend.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item under second passage is an ordinance and amendment of chapter twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended entitled police relating to traffic control personnel and school crossing guards, sponsored by Council Vice President Roderick.
Thank you. We've discussed this close, close to a year. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting. I don't have anything to add at this point. No, I'll, I'll wait, see if colleagues have comments. If not, I'm prepared to move, move the question.
I move to approve.
Second.
Unless that was a motion, I'm sorry.
Nope, no, that wasn't.
The second, that was a form of a motion.
It was a motion by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza.
Roll call, vote, please.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this, please speak up. Madam Clerk, is anyone on the line raising a?
No, Council President, nobody is.
One more time, then I'll close public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please speak up now. If not, public comment is closed at this point in time. We may proceed with a vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Can I interrupt for a moment? If I could interrupt, sorry, Madam Clerk, Mr. President. Using the privilege of emergency discussion, can I ask the clerk, how many more items do we have left, more, just two?
We have two, Council Vice President.
I just want to suggest that we move through them closely due to events going on in the community and statewide. Yeah, so.
Short button.
I think we can, I think we can do these two, okay, thank you.
Let's, let's do that.
Second.
Sorry, did we?
The city clerk's got to read the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, we're on page eight, item three, second passage ordinances, okay. An ordinance and amendment of chapter two of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended entitled administration relating to the revision of a budget timeline for presentation and passage of a budget ordinance and adding article seven, budget ordinance and establishing a finance review committee sponsored by Councilman Cahoon, Councilman Murato, Councilwoman Souza.
So no public comment, I moved for.
I think you have to offer public comment, right?
Is this second passage?
Yes.
Okay, as a public comment, anyone from the public on wishing to speak for or against this? Anyone from public comments wishing to speak for or against this? If not, public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, let me talk.
Madam Clerk, you can confirm that no public comment was received in the written form, correct?
No public comment has been received in public form, but I think we also need a motion.
Correct.
And a second.
I make a motion to approve second passage.
We have a motion by Councilman Murato, seconded by Councilwoman Souza for second passage. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
Oh, aye. And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance is an ordinance and amendment of chapter eight of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen ninety-eight, as amended entitled licenses and business regulations, section eight dash two, sponsored by Councilman Murato and Councilwoman Souza.
I have no comments on this, we've talked about it at length.
I move to approve.
Is it second passage?
It is.
Second passage.
So requires public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please speak up now. Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please speak up now. No one wishing to speak up at this point in time, public comment is closed. Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
So on the next item appears to adjourn. I just, if I'm not mistaken, or we have anything else on the docket at this point in time?
Before we adjourn, can I just make a comment?
Well, that, I was going to make one as well, but go ahead, Councilman.
I just want to thank city clerk for the hard work that she put into this lengthy, lengthy docket. I think it's one of the biggest ones that we've had so far to date. And I also like to thank the council for the, I think we did a really good job in moving this through, which, believe it or not, is record time for the amount of raw material that we have to go through, so that's all.
Thank you.
So before we, before we adjourn, and I know this is something I probably should have started off the meeting with, but I didn't, I just want to take a moment at this point in time to reflect, a moment of silence on the crisis that's going on in this country, you know, with the George, George Floyd. I would like to take a moment of silence, if we may, just, you know, very quickly and briefly, and just reflect on the things that are coming, that are revolving in this nation at this point in time. And hopefully, we all come together at some point in time and resolve the differences that are out there. So please, I ask you to bow your head in just a moment of silence. Thank you. And from what I understand, that there is some, a lot of activities going on in certain parts of this state at this point in time. We need to be conscious of what we're doing. There is a curfew, as the mayor said, early on of nine P M. Please be safe, everyone, and God bless.
Thank you, I'll move for adjournment, second.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, second as well. Roll call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you all, be safe.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, can you just stay on, you can stop the recording and stay on, I just got a question for you on the docket.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Bye.
Bye, be safe. See if we can stop the recording.